This conference will now be recorded.
Did you send the new code to Doug?
Yes, I did. I texted it. I mean, I emailed him. I apologize. I'm not sure what happened to the meeting. The link broke and we pulled it up and wouldn't let us log on to it. And the few people I had sent the information to, I sent them the new link.
Is Danny Nelson going to be?
He might. I would have sent it to him too.
Thank you. And things up. And then he'll have a vacation soon?
No.
Any word clamps from the group today?
Do you have it? Well, there's also going to be a call out there for the restaurant I go to this week.
You got to go see the fireworks?
Sorry for the delay. We'll just give Mr. Banks a moment.
I figure as long as he's sitting here, I can stop the session.
Shoot, my crazy heart is beating every night.
Well.
All is quiet in Gagerville. I'm sorry. All is quiet in Gagerville.
He's just waiting on it. Well, how's the pond? The dog got one.
My dog's one.
That's why I don't have one. We'll send some over if I need. Sure. I can.
I've got the bag. A couple of days ago, a little area of life, about not past 20 minutes ago.
Don't want you to feel neglected.
My mind is confused.
You were a teenager, you can get out of it.
Yeah.
Well, while we're waiting, I'll just remind everybody to turn their phones to silent mode. And I want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you. Same for you.
You gonna shoot off some fireworks, Margaret?
No, I think I'll just watch them from my back porch.
Okay.
Have some fun.
Just waiting on Mr. Banks.
Where did, um?
Oh, we at least didn't pledge allegiance since we started.
Give us one minute. I wanted to make sure everybody was notified.
Probably someone there that could be taken out too.
Yeah, I believe so.
I could read your mind.
I agree. On what song?
I like Phillip's idea. Take off Washington Jefferson, put his face on there.
Oh, there he is.
I'm on.
All right.
Doug's here.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's 3:15. And as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, peaceful with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'll quickly call the role. Our district attorney, Tony Pierce, is here. Supervisor Tinkle is present in person. Supervisor Banks is on the phone. Supervisor Feinberg is on the phone or computer. Supervisor Guy is on the phone, computer, and Supervisor Flaherty is in person. And our district manager, Chris Schumaker, is in person. I already mentioned about phones to silent. So, Chris, I'll turn it over to you because you're there in the room.
Okay, well, I apologize for our technical delay. The meeting showed up on there, but somehow the link was broken. So, we started a new meeting with the meeting code of 110-059-933. We emailed that to several of the people that said they were interested in attending the meeting today. We had sent meeting notices to it, so I've got it back to them.
Chris, is it possible to also come quickly for something up on the website for the change in the code? Because some people may be calling that to see how it is getting.
We can take care of that. And and we were starting the meeting today on the Pond Standards Workshop. It's been rescheduled from several months back. And what I would like to do, please, is ask L. Harris to come up and introduce the Pond Standards Committee and then ask them to make a presentation on the document that they put together. And then we'll just move that to an open forum with board members. Hello?
Good afternoon, everyone. L. Harris, Natural Resources for Gateway Services District. Before I introduce the Pond Committee, I would like to take a moment to thank them all, everyone, for all their time and effort and all the hard work that they put into putting this document together. I know it took time out of your busy schedules and research on your part, and we're much appreciative of that. Just want to say thank you. All right. With that, we'll move forward. I just want to introduce the Pond Standards Committee. Ms. Flavia Walsh, Ms. Judy Peet, Will Glassy, who is not in attendance today, Mr. Tom George, who is also not in attendance today, Sally Black Baron, is not in attendance, and Mr. Jim Weisen, who is here with us today. And with that, I would like to step out of the way and let the Pond Committee answer any questions or discussion that the board might have on the document as written, the amended document that I sent out. I had erroneously attached the wrong one to me again. With that, oh, please beg my pardon. I did not mention Mr. Bela Vega took time out of his busy schedule as well to come over and give us some input with his expertise and this background. And I don't know who's going to start.
Do you have the slides?
Mm-hmm. They're up now.
Ready? Well, thanks, everyone. Flavia and I are going to tag team, go back and forth with regard to our policy or recommendations or by maintenance standards, recommendations. But first, I want to introduce and give a little bit of background and put a little box around what we're doing here. It just gives some insight into where we're coming from. First of all, this is a policy statement. It's not an implementation guide or an implementation plan. We tried to keep this implementation separate from policy. We did work on the former ponds group, Flavia and I, and we do too. And I think that's one of the things that kind of led to complexity and confusion in there because we have a lot of implementation stuff. So, it's purely policy. However, we've done a lot of work. We've done a lot of research. We pulled a lot of stuff all over the place. And the members of the committee have a lot of good ideas about implementation. We're certainly ready and willing to assist with implementation when the time comes. And Flavia will talk a little bit more about that, specify some specifics later. Our goal is we wanted to keep this document brief and concise. This is seven pages. It's less than half of what the former 2015 document is. It's about a third of the size of the proposal in 2019. And so, we wanted to be internally consistent, no redundancies, no editorializing, no subjective descriptors, keep it objective, keep it focused, say everything one time, say it one time clearly. We had many versions of this, probably 25 versions. We agonized over the language and what should be in a sentence, what should not be in a sentence. So, if you see things that maybe you thought we omitted, we did it on purpose for a reason. The overreaching kind of new policy is that the controlling legal documents by a pertinent government agency, including the D.O., the E.R.P., any special requirements, need to be followed. They are meaningful documents. They need to be followed. And where those requirements are not being followed, there needs to be remediation effort. Now, keeping, all that being said, it's been 30 years since there's been a implemented policy. There's probably never been an implemented policy with regard to maintenance, particularly with water quality and materials and things. Given that each pond has a unique governmental agency requirement for it, and there's widely disparate views around Gateway with regard to what residents think should and shouldn't be done with ponds, we wanted to put a good deal of flexibility and be practical in this approach. So, while we're saying we have to focus on the D.O., we have to focus on the E.R.P., it's not a light switch. We're not saying we're going to blow everything up and start over tomorrow. It's going to be a process, and there needs to be some flexibility. There needs to be practical application of these. Go to the next one.
And Jim, can I ask you to speak up just a little bit or move the mic over? I know you're tall.
I'm tall.
Yes. If we don't hear it through there, it's not recording that well.
Okay. Just going to summarize what Flavia and I are going to go over for the rest of our presentation. Each pond must be maintained to the individual conditions in the E.R.P. and the development order and any other requirements that might be established by Florida law or Army Corps, anybody else. Requirements, as we all know, differ from pond to pond. These ponds started getting built back in the 80s. And the last ones just got built a few years ago over in Hampton Park. So, there's different requirements from pond to pond. And so, for example, if there's aerators required, you know, in the D.O., there should be aerators in the pond. If they were placed a little bit off, you know, we're not saying dig them up and move them. We're just saying you just need to be there. Anytime there's a planted littoral shelf required or littoral zone required that should be planted, it should be planted. If it's not planted, it should be planted. Conversely, if there's vegetation outside of littoral zone, that is subject to removal. It doesn't belong there. It's not part of the D.O. So, it's subject to removal. And we have, again, built-in flexibility, you'll see, trying to be flexible in this process. Water quality is to be monitored every month at six locations. That's similar to what's being done now. We've got a little bit different view on that. And nutrients shouldn't exceed E.R.P. standards for an extended period of time. Keeping in mind that at some points of the year, especially when the fertilizer ban is up, that you're going to have spikes in certain nutrients, but for the most part, it should greatly exceed any standard for a long period of time. So, Flavia, pick it up here.
So, another component that we'll be talking about on the document will be how often the maintenance is going to take place into the catch basins. And I think that's the one. Okay. So, the control structures, the everything else that's part of the system that it's also been neglected for quite a while. We wanted to incorporate in this document as much as we could so we can then have follow-up and have everything working as a system altogether. The goal is to ensure that all the slopes and erosions are being addressed either by the lake bank restoration project or on a basis, because not every pond is on the lake bank restoration project. We also understand that we're going to need assistance from residents into reporting items to staff. And this is only going to aid and try to speed up the process in many different areas. So, we want to engage with the residents when it comes to that particular point. We want calls. We want to know. So, we may see any effects on calls and feedback from residents. And I think it's important that we do follow up for sure in the initial term of this with the residents. So, not only we know what they're reporting, but maybe outside things that we missed in this document that maybe for a later version in the near future, we can adopt and change. What about the next slide? So, we also took in consideration the current contract. And we agree that individual inspections of each pond should continue once per month in addition to treatments. And what that means is they will be inspecting a pond, but you may not necessarily be getting treatment every time, every month on that pond. Treatment will only be made to that pond if they're necessary. However, inspections are to be made on a monthly basis. And we'll continue to use the report of the contract. And I believe just the C.D.D. staff had tailored for those inspections.
Back up. Littorals. With regard to existing littorals that are on final littoral shelves or littoral zones, there are requirements, if there are requirements on those ponds, they need to be met. That includes removal of exotic plant species. That's to be done in perpetuity. That's part of the permit. Nuisance of exotic plants, invasive plants should be kept at 5% or less. One thing that we thought was being done, I think it's policy now, but perhaps isn't being done in every case, is littorals need to be cut back so they're not within three feet of any control structure so they don't get the clog, the control structure pretty flooding. That's very important. During the low water season, the plants will be cut back for a kept look. Low-hanging tree limbs which scour the ground or inhibit mowing or maintenance will need to be trimmed regularly. If staff determines that the planting requirements are not being met, so there's PLS out there, there's littoral zones out there and they're not planted, consistent with the D.O., they need to get together with the public works manager and develop a plan to bring in compliance. And so, there are areas we know that where there are littoral zones that are not planted, that are not planted, the specifics in the D.O., those need to be addressed and brought into compliance. Next one. Now, flip side of this, littorals that are growing outside of the specified littoral zone. So, in the development order, we've got vegetation growing in places that are not indicated where they should be in the development orders. So, there are a number of ponds that don't have any littoral requirements at all, probably, I'm not sure exactly how many, 17, 18, something like that. And our policy is, you know, the development order should be followed. Those littorals should be removed. What we have set up in the policy is that it reflects a little bit this and be practical because people have different views on this, trying to keep everybody happy here so they're not pounding on your door nonstop every meeting. That property owners can request removal of the vegetation behind their homes twice per calendar year. This is if they're on a pond without any requirement. For those on a pond with requirements, for instance, the D.O. may say you got to plant them here, you got to plant them there. I'd say you live in between where they are not in the D.O. Those homeowners who are in between can likewise request twice a year that the littorals be removed from behind their homes. Now, why twice a year? Why not 10 times a year, anything like that? The reason is, is that sometimes it takes two shots or two treatments to get it out. If it's done really well first time, it probably doesn't have to be redone. But just in case, that's why the two are there. The other side of the coin is we also don't want people abusing it and saying, "Well, I've got a sheet here. I've got a sheet here. Why don't you come out and take care of that?" And they start calling six or seven times a year. So, we wanted to put a limit on it to two. We think that's practical if it's done properly. And I've been through this twice personally, and I know that if it's done right, it's going to last three, four, five years. So, the GSCD staff will determine if it's subject to removal. And this should be a fairly easy process because you have all of the D.O.s. And you just look up the person's address. Are they on a littoral shelf or not? Yes or no? If yes, sorry, we can't remove them. If no, yes, we can remove them. Then you have to look, one thing we have in our policy is there cannot be any significant erosion within 10 feet of where the littoral will be removed. So, that's going to be a diminishing issue going forward. As the lake bank remediation process moves along, that's going to become a very kind of diminishing task that's going to have to be done. So, most of this, we envision, again, we're glad to help with implementation, but we envision that most of this, as the lake bank remediation is done and you have all the D.O.s in file, is probably going to be a very quick back office job. It's probably not going to take too much, you know, be back office determination, the supervisor, final sign-off. And that's pretty much all. We have put in the policy that we believe this thing only to be done in writing. There need to be prompts. And we put in 30 days, all requests and all the terminations will be done in writing within 30 days. We originally had 10. Chris told us we were out of our mind, and so we moved it to 15. Then L. told us we were out of our minds, and so then we moved it to 30. Upon approval, the contractor will begin the removal process, the next visit to the pond. So, we're not anticipating any special visits or special type of activity by the contractor. Next time they're there, they start the process. Any remaining littorals, this is important, again, we set up flexibility here. So, if you're on a place where there is no littoral zone in the D.O., you can request to have them removed. For people who don't request to have them removed and want to keep them, those littorals have to be maintained. They can't just go zooming out into the, you know, sideways to other people and out into the lake. Since there's no D.O. over there, or littorals only in the D.O. to dictate what that has to be, our policy statements suggest that those littorals be limited to coming out from control elevation out into the pond, no more than eight feet, and then they do not exceed three feet in height measured from the ground. Now, next one. Let's give a little background, you know, how we came up with this. And this took a long time. You can imagine it took a long time and many, many drafts. We thought that cost benefit, maintaining littorals is extraordinarily expensive. They keep growing back. You have to keep cutting them. You have to keep pulling them back. It's non-stop and perpetuity. Taking them out where they don't belong or where they shouldn't be is a one-time event with minimal maintenance going forward. And there's lots of articles. We researched this, all kinds of articles from different states showing that once you get them out, your maintenance costs go down dramatically versus having them in there. So, if it's not required, it's going to be cheaper in the long run to have them removed. And this is consistent, really, with current Lee County and Collier County, for that matter, building codes or development codes, 10418 in Lee County, which says you should put all your littorals on in one place by a preserve for maintenance reasons. And it says also, if required, if at all possible, required to be put somewhere other than behind homes, again, to avoid all kinds of maintenance problems and maintenance costs. So, it's consistent across the policies and development rules. But also, we're looking at risk management, and it's not something I hear talked about much here, but it's something that really, maybe it's because of, you know, my career, what I did with risk management was top of mind every second of the day. I think there's a risk management element here. Like, five years ago, we did this, and Ed was leading our work group. We didn't know where littorals belonged and didn't belong. And Kevin, you were on that as well too. Because we didn't have the development orders. We had maybe, I don't know, 10 or 15. Now, since then, you had, so now you know where the littoral zones are and where they park. And in some cases, and I've seen this with my own eyes, there's some dangerous, unsafe conditions that are lurking around in a lot of this vegetation that is growing where it doesn't belong, especially alligators, but also snakes. And somebody knows there's been some water maracas incited in the area not too recently, not too long ago, I should say. And if something happens and you have littorals growing where they don't belong, and that's a factor in something that happened, you know, that's a risk management issue for the board. And, you know, and I saw it just two months ago. There's a patch of five houses down from me. There's two houses in a row that have spike rush across the back, and they've got a slot in the middle, maybe for fishing. That's about 10 feet wide, keep them out, to keep it clear. And I'm just sitting in my line, and all of a sudden, I see a dog on between the two houses and jumps right into the pond, right through that slot into the pond splashing around. In the meantime, there had been a big alligator, I mean, big, for Silver Lakes, you know, alligators are usually five, six, seven feet. This one's like 10 feet. It's really big. It had been there for weeks. And that spike rush comes out late in the afternoon, suns itself in the guy's backyard and swims away. So, that gator had been there for a while. So, that dog went through. I'm like, "Oh, my God, that dog's going to get eaten." But that wasn't the problem. The problem was, right after, five seconds after that dog went in, a little girl went in. Five years old, six years old, seven years old, she went in. She didn't dive in the lake like the dog did. She went in, she waded in about up to her knees. But if that, you know, I yelled at her, but I don't think she heard because the dog was yelping and splashing around and all that. And there's five houses down. But, you know, they did get out fairly quickly. But if that gator had been there that day, it wasn't. It was there the next day, but it wasn't there that day. That could have been a real tragedy here. And that kind of thing really needs to be considered when looking at this. Again, as we put it together, we're looking for flexibility because it's a lot of different homeowner views. And I'm sure you're going to hear some of them today about, you know, littorals and getting them there and not there. And we tried to develop something that made everybody, try to satisfy everybody as much as we could. So, those people who don't want them and they're not on a littoral shelf should be able to get them removed if they're there or kept away. Those who do want them, even though it's not consistent with the D.O., at this point, given it's been all these years without a implemented policy, you know, we think that we should show flexibility, let them maintain it and not try to force one view down the other and not say, "We got to nuke everything because the D.O. says that." Or we have to have it all the way around because I like looking at it. And we just don't think that's right. We think we need to be flexible and try to satisfy as many people as we can. Now, the forceful appointment to shift to a mirror removal policy, all that means is that our policy is that let the people who want them to be removed request that they be removed. The flip of that would be, let's do it the other way around. Let's let the people who want to keep them request to keep them. And I think the big difference to me is in the risk management side of that. Because if you just have people request to have them taken out, for the people who kept them, you know, you've got negative insurance. They were given the opportunity. They didn't take it there for, you know, for negative insurance if they want them. If you do it the other way around and have the people who want to keep them, in writing, because everything's in writing here, you write down that they want to keep them, then you've got some positive. You write down that they want to keep them, then you've got some positive assurance. And then probably, you know, Tony will obviously be the one doing all of this. He might say, hey, you ought to put a liability waiver in it too. Just in that written document, whatever it is. So that, that's kind of the background that went into putting all this together, trying to be flexible. We know it's a, it's a, it's an issue because a lot of people are excited. And we like to be able to have everybody essentially get what they want behind their homes, but without forcing anyone's views. You know, my view would be, take them out. I can't enforce my view on everybody like that. Somebody else may say, I want them all the way around, forget the development order. Well, you can't do that. We need to be flexible in putting this together. Flavia? Flavia's going to...
Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to backtrack on this one. I'm going to stay on this. So I think one, one goal, and I agree with pretty much everything that Jim said, but I want us to not be one-sided. And I think a few of the statements may not reflect exactly what the consensus of the pond was. I want to refrain from saying laterals don't belong there. Because there's nothing that says they must not belong there. So I think that was just being misspoken. Maybe they will not require, I think that's probably the better approach. But there's nothing there to say that they will not belong in a specific area. I also agree there are some risk factors within having laterals. And I also agree there are risk factors that we did not talk about by removing laterals. So I don't necessarily want to get into that now, but, but I'm, I'm aware that every one of us can just sit back and say, inlookable sides. I do want to also give credit to staff when Jim actually brought it up about having one document with tons of information. A really good to-go document, staff put together a spreadsheet which contains every pond. Within that list, it shows the permit number, the special condition, development numbers, limit development, limit development numbers on it. Tells about the slopes, it tells you if the aeration is required, tells you if laterals are required, what are the bands that requirement. So we actually have a, staff has agreed to and staff created this too, that it's at a glance, you can, somebody can call it in or send an email. And, you know, within two or three minutes, they can say, you know, it's required, it's not, or so forth.
Someone talking? While you're doing it, is it our point? You see you make part. Is your staff able to talk?
Yes, that's, yeah. I also want to talk about water quality monitoring. And what we decided that we're going to be looking at it, it's the TSI rating. And the goal for us is to have a TSI rating that is below 70. In addition, we will look at other chemicals and nutrients that are in the water, in the body of water, that, you know, are significantly above what a normal range would consider. We did, not necessarily going to go over the implementation parts. I think that this is kind of part of it. But it's kind of self-explanatory on the standards of, you know, what steps they need to take to not only monitor the water, but with a plan to improve the water quality in those ponds. And we don't want to narrow down to, if the pond has a water quality issue, let's just keep laterals. Or let's shove laterals. That is not the goal. And each pond, it is its own ecosystem. So for Pond A, maybe adding a few laterals would be sufficient and we can try. But maybe Pond B, laterals are going to be a choice and it should be aeration because it needs much more. So we don't want it to have laterals as to-go fix for everything. We wanted to be able to look at everything. And we listed some of the examples, which is, you know, additional aerators, the temporary installation of the nano bubblers, you know, introducing bacteria and pon shading and dye. You know, those are all the things that we want to look at it and other things that will come in the future. We should be looking at it and be open to it. I kind of took over the costs on a treatment basis. One thing that the committee did look at is the current contract requires for the vendor to take tests on each pond once a year. Kind of looking back and thinking, you know, we're going to wait a whole year to get a results to see that something's wrong. We're going to visually see that before we get the test results. You know, if you have algae for three consecutive months and 50% of your pond, you're not going to wait another nine months to get the test results, something is wrong there. So we just felt like the cost, it wasn't really beneficial and it wasn't something that was needed. We tailored to suggesting that we test every basin, all six basins monthly instead of the yearly. And if any of those test results are skew or not within the guidelines that we have set, for detecting, you know, place within the ponds that, I mean, that discharge into the body of water. We were happy to say that the cost actually to do a monthly testing versus the annual testing is actually cheaper overall. I think it's a, almost a $3,000 savings and much more beneficial to all of us. So knowing that ponds are really the backbone of the stormwater system, wetlands do play a part on it as well. So we want to, you know, ensure that they're being inspected, they are being monitored. There are, you know, times that we may need them to have tested. I know we are having, you know, Timber Creek discharge into the wetland right behind FPL. So I, I think we want to be proactive. We want to, you know, maybe now go and test that water because we have water there and see what it is now and maybe see a year from now, what the impacts that there will be having all that water discharge into, you know, our stormwater system. We want to also mimic not only the requirements for the nuisance in exotic vegetation that must not exceed the 5% in the, in the areas. We also want to engage the residents, you know, to let us know if they see anything out of the usual on the wetlands or anything else that's happening. One thing that I think we did revise was the quantity, right, of the, what is in the report? Do you want to go about that?
Quantity?
Inspections.
Oh, every, every quarter?
Yeah, so, so the current contract, yeah. Originally, we thought, let's keep it to the one month on a monthly basis. But after they have some feedback from Pelican Preserve and from staff and just looking at it, we feel comfortable with, you know, four inspections during the year. And it's not even open to, you know, to I stay here. If that's going to have a reduction on the contract, then we can apply that money towards more of the maintenance of the laterals. Because we know that's what the big box is. So we're open to that. And so that, you know, we have actually deal for suggestion edits to the document that you have in front of you now. And Jim and I can go and, and over each one of them. But I think we'll wait for the last, we'll have the residents go ahead and give their feedback to the board. And we'll just go last if they need to take care of themselves.
Do you have a last thing or?
At the end, right? So like Jim said in the beginning, the introduction, you know, we are here to help with implementation because I, I think the entire committee not only took the time to create this, there was a lot of time thinking of the process, like literally, point that, you know, we were writing it down, okay, if this happens on day first and we need to take this and how it's going to happen. Okay, do we even have staff to cover that? We're going to need more staff, is this reasonable, it's not? So we have really great ideas, the committee came up with really great ideas into the implementation part of it. And we're open, you know, to assist there for if it comes to it and if there's a need for that. We're open to feedback and we're open to see revisions and, and just kind of started, started the work. We waited long enough.
I have one more thing to add, again, with the implementation part of this. And it's, I was going to say it earlier, that I said, I'm waiting to begin here. Because, you know, cost is going to be a big part of this. And I know I've heard people say, oh my God, taking all of these laterals out is going to cost us, going to cost that. Not necessarily. If, if things are planned right and you, and there's a coordination between, you know, there's a flexibility and practicality in here, then there's maybe some coordination between the lake bank remediation and the coral maintenance remediation. It may not be that bad. I took a look at the, the ponds that hadn't known, this is an example, this goes way beyond this. But taking a look at the ponds that don't have any littoral requirements in them, I think there's 18 of them. Take a look at that and I know initial reaction is that's going to cost a fortune. Well, maybe it's not going to cost much at all because either them have already been remediated. They've been rocked up and it's probably not too much there. And I'm not familiar with all five, but I'm certainly familiar with the one across the street here, which is Lake 90, the pond that's between the church and the villas in Silver Lakes. That doesn't have a littoral requirement. There were a lot of laterals there that were taken out as part of the lake bank remediation. There's like a little tiny band that's on the bottom of the rock in a couple of places here. That can be sprayed out really quick, you don't even have to rake it up, there's so little of it. And so those five lakes are probably taken care of. Three of the other ones are in the FPL easement. And one of the things that's in our policy and Flavia was going to cover it, is that one of our recommendations is, look, we took this from doing research in Collier County. Collier County said that ponds flow into one another, you can kind of superload the laterals on the bottom one if you want to. And not put so many up front. They look at it kind of holistically. Those three ponds in the FPL easement, our recommendation and our policy is, is leave them alone. Just keep it away from the, from the structures so you don't clog them up. But there's no reason to have to do anything with those. Four of them are on preserves with a couple of them, I think two of them have one side on the golf course. So the preserve side, you probably don't have to do a whole lot. Ed would know about the golf course, obviously, what would have to be done with those. Then the remaining ones, and I think there's six, maybe there's seven or six, they're on the remediation list. And all but, all but one, I believe, is in phase two, which means hopefully, you know, they get done the next round. And maybe as part of planning for this, you say, let's, let's kill two birds with one stone. Let's get those six that are in phase two and let's make sure they get done next time around. Because we're going to clear out the laterals then. And at the same time, maybe just do a little bit of touch up and that's it. So that's 18 or 19 ponds that, you know, at first blush, you might think is going to cost a fortune. It may not cost anything or very, very little. It may just be a tiny amount. So it's implementation, things like that. As Flavia said, we've done a lot of work on this and put a lot of thought through this, things like that. Just with a little bit of planning, maybe a little bit of prioritizing, you know, the lake bank thing and coordinating the two together can save an awful lot of money.
Are you going to reference these slides that have anything to do with your presentation?
Yeah, I was going to add that.
Oh, thank you. I can do that.
First of all, though, I would like to ask Ernesto, Dr. Ernesto Vela Vega, if he would like to come up or if he would mind coming up and maybe giving us his viewpoints on some things we had him review the documents as well. Here's my DL book. You've asked me about this multiple times. I hear this. This is a DL plan for every single pond, every single flowway, every water body, in gateway. This is the development code 98-28. That was in fact when Hampton Park was built. It states that plants must be installed in clusters around the lake perimeter. So it doesn't, doesn't address a shaded area on in that. The other item that I had sent out with the colored pictures, we just wanted to show that there are impacts to the budget when we go out and take out large portions of laterals. The areas fill up with undesirable submerged vegetation, which then has to be treated. Then we have to come back out, rake it out. When we took out the laterals behind three lots, it ended up costing $2,400. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it needs to move to submerged treatment now. Sometimes when you go out and you narrow the bands back. That is the afterlateral bands or narrows picture. It fills in with torpedo grass. Torpedo grass is an invasive, category one invasive exotic. We have to spray that out, then we have to come back in and rake that out. And as we said, you know, the cost of water quality is still yet to be determined, we don't know. And the cost of wildlife, we are destroying wildlife habitat. Because we do have several species of birds that nest exclusively in these plants around our pond. And there's also, that is where your estuaries for your native fish are. If we take everything out, then we'll be left with undesirables in our pond. Now, the reason these other points were put here, so ponds not specifically left, because if we're going to go right by the littoral button, the development order was mentioned over and over. From going right by the development order because it's not shaded here, the laterals can come out. Well, if we're going by the development order, we're going to go by the development order. The development order says all those aerators over in Hampton Park are in the wrong place. Will those, will we be moving them? That's what this is about. Where are you going to draw the line when it comes to following the development order? And that would be up to our support supervisors. So that's all it was, was to show you the, you know, that there is a cost involved and to get guidance on just how closely are we going to follow these documents. Oh, and while I'm here, I might as well let you know that all of the ponds that had a requirement for aeration have aeration in them.
Mr. Ernesto? Remove my mask so I can speak more clearly. I got to applaud the effort that you have done with the committee putting this document straight. I read it through the whole thing and I'm very happy to see that a lot of good things that are present in that. But there were three things that I want to point out to, to the committee that must be addressed in order to make the document stronger for hold. In page two on this document, there's, it's not a mistake, but it's, you gotta be fixed, this, this comment. There is the definition for the TSI, which is the, I'm going to send this document also to, so you should understand what it's, what they're, the writing that I'm doing here. The TSI is a value that determines the overall condition of the water body based on the concentration of total nitrogen, total phosphorus and total phylate. So that's the technical meaning of the TSI. This value is calculated following the Florida DE method presented in the document that I have the name of the document. So that, that is, that is to validate the TSI as like, why using TSI? And I think it needs to be, you know, to validate this. It's a great indicator and that's, that's a great, great idea to use that as an indicator. Now, on page seven, right after the nutrients, there is a portion that it talks about, or does not talk about, they just mentioned algae and algae. And then the page seven is of the document of the table here.
On the standard.
The standard is out, correct. So when you mention algae, there's many kind of algae. And one of the, one that I think that you're referring to is filamentous algae, which I put a little definition in this, is the filamentous algae is a type of microscopic algae that becomes abundant when nutrients like nitrogen and/or phosphorus are rich in the water and the waters are stagnant. So that, that is the characteristic of filamentous algae. It's the one, number one problem, most of the filamentous algae that's come that people see around the pond. And I say, okay, so if you want to eliminate that, you have a margin of 5% maximum. I would increase that tolerance to 25%. And the reason is because if you put that low... And the reason is because if you put that low, the low restriction of 5%, you're going to be having to spray filamentous algae almost daily. I mean, it's going to be overwhelming for the company to maintain 5% or less of that. That is, that is not achievable. A 25% is pretty much in conjunction with the amount of littorals that normally should be in the pond approved by the county. The amount of 25% littorals on the shoreline is a healthy pond and that filamentous algae can grow inside those littorals. And I'm thinking that is a good approach to say, and then you're not going to be over exceeding the demand for spraying filamentous algae to the companies that have been spraying. So that's my, my recommendation behind that and I write it in there. And the last one, which is, I see a little miss. In the page number eight, there's a third bullet, bullet in your, following the, at the beginning, from the beginning, the top of the page to the bottom. It says in this, in the part of the sentence, at the end of the sentence, the last sentence says, afterwards, the property owner's request for removal can be reconsidered. So to me, that doesn't really make sense. Oh, thank you so much for putting, yeah, if you go to page eight, that's the last one. Yeah, actually keeps scrolling up and you'll find out nutrients, yeah, keeps scrolling up. Yeah, okay, but oh, go down. Just to mention that after nutrients, there is a bullet that says algae and that's the one that I was mentioning about filamentous algae that needs to be presented there because algae, we're talking algae, like platonic algae, bentic algae, blue green algae. I mean, there's a lot of types of algae. In this case, you should put filamentous algae there as I've described. Okay, now we can scroll down, please, to the page eight. And this is my, my main, yeah, in page eight, the third bullet, one, two, three, four, yeah, it starts as if a property owner requests for removal littorals was denied because a significant washout or erosion was present, GSCVD must ensure that the repair of such a washout or erosion. I agree with that sentence. I absolutely agree. The one that follows that is what I don't agree. Afterwards, the property owner's request for removal can be reconsidered. Why are you going to reconsider something that caused the damage of the erosion? So the erosion was caused by the lack of littorals. Why are you going to reconsider in the future to be back again for removal? I don't, I don't see the logic that I say, this doesn't make sense. The erosion was caused by the lack of littorals. Then you allow the removal in the future for the reconsideration of the removal littoral? That doesn't make sense to me. In fact, I'm, I'm actually suggesting to remove that sentence because it really doesn't, it's going to go back again into another erosion problem five years in the future.
But this, this sentence for removal assumes the littorals aren't there, asking for removal of the erosion happened even with the littorals there. That's the point. Littorals are already there and they're asking for the littorals to be removed. The erosion happened despite the littorals being there for other reasons. It started to happen for other reasons.
Even with the littorals out there, the erosion is still happening and then you want to remove their littorals?
We're all looking at a real serious thing here and that's sort of types. We have sort of types, we can put in all the littorals you want and first water comes to wash it away and that's the problem we have about it. But we'll get into that.
So those are my, my three recommendations on this document and yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we do have three people that filled out cards that would like to speak. And chairs are, if I call them up.
Yes, please do.
I think we'll start with the order on the sign in. Helen Cottner, Ashbrook Court. Ms. Cottner, we do have a five minute time limit.
Yes, I have questions.
Okay.
Helen Cottner, 10246 Ashbrook Court, Hampton Park. I'm seeing from your website, a document that says agenda page 14. Goes page. I'm very confused about what all of this is from what I saw.
It just, this is not working right. I thought it was on the last one.
So it says agenda page 11, page four, agenda. I mean, is this the same agenda you're looking at regarding this gentleman's presentation?
I think what happened, Ellen, do you explain that to her? I think what went out in the board book was a previous document.
Oh.
That it was the original pond standards and we had reissue an addendum that's on the website, but what was actually in that board book you may be looking at wasn't the document.
That's an old document then?
Correct.
Okay, well then that's why I'm so fully confused. Because the document I'm reading talks about the HOA must approve. That was the wrong document.
It's your same May.
There's no date on it. She didn't print out the whole thing.
Hang on, you got to go to the west.
Okay, it is. Well, it was there.
That was totally my fault and I apologize.
That's why we've got the, got it revised, got the correct form. Thank you Jim, as I said before, for noting that. And probably my questions aren't appropriate, but I'll ask one. Ask them anyhow. The thing I was looking at was all this approval that was needed by everyone in the community and the HOA board would be presenting a request for removal. So all that's garbage. Oh, that's, okay, never mind. Thank you.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah.
We'll go to the second person, Avery Demming. Avery?
Keep telling, I'm not going to be as easy, I'll tell you.
Okay.
No, but I have cut my remarks down to five minutes. Last time I went on for 25, you wouldn't let me do it. Anyway, here I am. You should have received a county code 10183. I'm going to refer to that in a minute. And my remarks are a little generic, not specific to the, to the new standard being considered. But regarding that, on page four, at least of the one I had, the draft I had, mentions the littorals that they have. Is that what you all have? Yes. Now, this is just an example from page four, seven times there it mentions pertinent government agency and requirements and/or documents, seven times. And I imagine that's throughout the rest of this document as well. I'm just referring to this page seven, going through that. Well, oftentimes people even here today talk about the DO and they're referring to an original DO that was approved. In Hampton's case, it was approved 12 years ago or more. And anyway, they're referring to the original DO, those specifications, they of course list the lakes, slopes, trees, littorals, depths, and so forth. And with that, those specs come a standard maintenance effort with those. Well, the DO is not the only document to consider, at least the DO from the first approval back in 2008 for Hampton Park. The DO has some other attachments to it that are included as part of the DO. And referred to section 10183, I read, this isn't, this isn't just my discovery referred to by county officers that I've been talking to for a long time. And in fact, people who are on, on site here referred me to this document. And what it does is it, this describes other documents that actually become part of their DO while all this is under construction. And there's three documents that are mentioned here. The one is called substantial compliance. And that is a document where something, they couldn't bring certain items up to the original DO. So the engineer agrees with someone in the county to sign off on a certain method to correct this and that would be approved. And literally, there's a sign off sheet on that, on both. And you can obtain that. In fact, I have a sheet of that for Hampton Park of those. I think there were a dozen of those. The other document, the second document is called certification compliance. Well, that one is actual physical inspection by certified inspector by the county and they will either accept the item being inspected or the turnover process, or they will reject it. And any rejection will have to go back through to the developer to be corrected. Something that is accepted though, becomes part of the DO. And thus, whether it's actually literally part of the original DO or something close to it, that's their decision to accept it or not to accept, not yours or mine. The third thing is DO amendments. We'll talk about that in a second. Okay, so these are described in 1013183. Each of these impact the DO and people here need to understand if there is such a thing, people who are implementing the maintenance procedures and make sure they follow those as well for the maintenance documents. So substantial compliant could change the DO, so could certificate of compliance, which may prove something that's not normally part of this first, the DO when it was first approved. And all of that again is part of the DO once it's turned over. That turnover is technically called a certificate of occupancy, by the way, that's mentioned in there. And the district then receives and signs off on the receipt of the DO as it stands once certified in these fashion. All these certifications come through and are part of the DO that is part of the DO that is received here by Gateway. So nothing in the 10183 though allows for contesting these things that I can see there. Once a district accepts the certificate of occupancy, the district is not obligated to change anything or is not legally required to change anything. This county accepts it and we are turned over and we accept that turnover. That's a fact, that's the way it's going to be. Now, if you disagree with something the county did, well then you can send them the bill for when you fix it. Well, good luck there. If it's a big deal, you may, there's only two options. One is to sue them, of course. If it's something that they overlooked that was terrible, it's not functioning, you have to draw a line there and sue the county. But there's one other way. If that happens, that the item in question happens to be an improvement, yet not on the DO, but yet is an improvement since then, since the DO has county requirements, quote unquote, requirements and minimum requirements, it does not mean there are better things that can be added along the way. And those are thus, can be part of certificate of compliance. And if we get some arguments about that, well then you proceed with what's called an amendment of the DO. Thank you. Officially amendment, it's a two-page document found on, in code 10118. There it is. For a thousand bucks, you can amend your DO to include that item that may have been on a CC that some people are contesting that will permanently, technically add to that DO for the life of the DO, called an amendment. Any questions about that, board members or Chris? And you got it? Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more speaker and that is Justin Purcell. And worth Hampton Park littorals.
One of those greats in there. Hi, Ward, how you doing? We've all been in talks with county officials, Jessica Salzer provided me with the latest DO in Hampton Park. Have it on PDF and I have the copy in front of me, it's at home. On the DO, landscape calc, phase one. Part E, stormwater pond landscape requirement per land development code section 10-418, one plant per linear foot of lake shoreline is measured at the control elevation water level. Says under littoral lists, contractor must use at least two species in each zone from the above list in each lake. Contractor may select other native littoral species with the approval of landscape architect C littoral cross-section sheet DO X03 for littoral locations. That would be the PLS locations. We've heard about section 10-183. I didn't type up anything. This is just how much printed off of Lee County website. Two and a quarter lines long. Section 10-183, final inspection and certificate of compliance. Improvements constructed pursuant to a development order may not be placed into service or otherwise utilized until the required certificate of compliance has been issued for the development order. Littorals that span 25 feet out into a pond and go all the way around the lake and expand beyond the PLS is not an improvement. It's, it was created out of neglect in these ponds, sheer neglect. Aerators, aerators in the ponds within Hampton Park, from what I can see, are with, within reason, in a accurate location per the development order. We're not looking to take out all the spike rush. Obviously, we, per our development order, we have a 25% minimum that needs to, needs to be maintained. Other than that, I'm not going to use my whole five minutes. And I do appreciate the ponds committee for putting that together. And I think it's a great direction and I appreciate her, that's so, and Ellen for their opinions, so.
Thank you, Justin. And that's all the public comments that we had signed up to speak.
I was just going to say Bob has an addition that he wants to add to the document, so I may want to speak to that.
Mr. Gepper, take to introduce yourself.
Bob Gepper, Pelican Preserve Chairman of the Pond's Work Group. In the prior documents that the board had considered, there was language that I just wanted to incorporate this. It is not new, it was taken verbatim, you know, what it says. In Pelican Preserve, it is recognized that all the stormwater treatment pond maintenance activities will continue to be overseen directly by the Pelican Reserve Pond's Work Group. These activities include selecting and managing the aquatic maintenance contractors, interacting with residents and water quality testing. Now, we're, here's where the ad begins after that. Pelican Reserve requires littorals and aeration in all ponds. Pelican also requires all downtown drainage piping on homes adjacent to ponds to be buried and drained in the bubble of boxes on the pond banks to mitigate washout issues. We have been doing that, we are doing it, not 100% there yet, but this incorporates our aeration project, our littoral project and the downtown project, which want to be part of the, this document.
Can I ask Bob a question?
Absolutely.
Make a statement. Pelican Reserve has a committee that runs these lakes. Does the CDD have a committee that helps Ellen run these lakes?
They're like, it's a habit, because the genesis of what they're driving to.
Well, I'd like to see a committee drive away.
We have done a lot of lake maintenance. Yes. There are currently 10 members of the Pond's Work Group.
Thank you, Mr. Gepper. That concludes all the public comments. This would be board discussion, madam chair.
Yeah, go ahead and start down the row. Go ahead and start with Mrs. Flaherty.
Flaherty? Can we? Can we go to page four? I'm sorry. That's okay.
May I ask?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Yes.
I know. I'm sorry. We have here on page four. Okay. All removal will be completed by Gateway contractor. Neither property owners nor residents are allowed to remove any Latorals from the pond. However, we go down and it says residential or commercial property owners are not allowed to remove and or maintain Latoral plantings. We have that twice about the the residents not removing. Can we combine that one little?
One little on the maintenance of it.
It's under requirements removal of Latorals. It's on page four.
Next to last pull it.
Yeah, right. It seems that it gets redundant. No, because it says residential property owners are not allowed to remove. And it says here, property owners, our residents are allowed to remove any Latorals. So we have it kind of twice. So can we combine it?
Okay, I see. I see this. I see the second to the last. It's here there. What else?
Oh, tell we're on the next page, page five, the last one.
Okay.
Yeah, that just, that seems.
I guess we can just remove. You want us to remove the word remove because the first one on page four, it actually specifically talks about remove Latorals. And on page five, it says or maintain. So I guess we can, you want us to remove the word remove on page five and just say maintain?
Okay, or you can combine them into one. Because that seems to be like, you know, that's my group. Yep, yeah. I'm sorry. I just.
Anything else?
Yeah, we can pick them. Also on page five, it's going to have a monthly tested on monthly basis and that we decided that who's going to do that monthly testing? Gateway or are we going to go back to the residents that were doing it before?
I guess that that will be part of the implementation. Like I mentioned, the current contract right now gives you around twenty thousand dollars to pay for the yearly for all ponds. So you would have just adjusted the current contract if you wanted and say, no longer do the yearly ponds for the twenty thousand. Let's go ahead and do it the six basins monthly and the cost is around eighteen thousand. I know I have reached out to George and that's the estimate. I think it's around fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, if I can clarify that, we have all that from the aquatic maintenance contract, the annual testing, and we have now contracted with Sanders Labs. And Sanders is going out and taking the monthly test from only from our five bases, five weers, and was sending us monthly report.
Okay, so that is already being done.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so it's not something new. Okay, now also on page four. This, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just wanting to know how we are going to get the property owners to report the exotics. And some of them don't. I don't live, I'm going to be honest, don't live on a pond, so I'm not going to do any report.
It just says they're encouraged.
Is there any way you can? Maybe, I'm just trying to help out. Could we put out during the water bill? Yeah, a little statement that that could be encouraged. I'm trying to encourage.
Yeah, I, I think that's implementation part. That's a good idea. And I think before even get to that, I mean, I would skip to within trust. I think we have to build trust back with the residents because I, I mean, I do feel like a lot of residents come in and they post their concerns and it really doesn't go anywhere. So now is the time that not only we have this document, we, we are pretty much telling the residents, look, this is what it is. Come to us and we'll listen to you. But it's important if we're going to say that we have to listen, we have to follow up. So I think we have to ask them to give us feedback. And I think that's a great idea, but I think will be for implementation of the how. Or even on the newspaper that. Yes.
I could put that in. Yes, okay. And my last thing has nothing really to do with you. It's just that we need to inform mainscape. That would be one of your implementations, that they cannot just sweep everything into the sewers. So I mean, that needs to be really reported to them. I've seen it too many times. Okay, that's just, it was my notes about how to keep them from getting into that.
I'll just stay in and go through all the book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all I have to.
I'm sure.
I'm going to go last, right?
Mr. Guy, do you have any questions or comments, Bobby or the group?
I do. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for the hard work that they have undertaken to put together the document. Work that the Board of Supervisors has tried a few times turn it over to a committee. Having said that, everything that I've read tells me that Latorals on ponds are a great advantage. They're an advantage for the bank retention. They're an advantage for the fish and bird habitat and they're advantage for algae control. And there probably are other advantages also. Seeing this, why did the committee not just require Latorals around all the ponds, period? Similar to what Mr. Gepphardt just described in Pelican Preserve. Thank you.
I think that the word here is compromise because I think there was no middle. When residents, either they want it or they don't. So I think the, the document really should prove that we were able to flex and bend and adapt. And, and I believe that we're going to learn within three years from now if this was the right decision or if it's not. So we, we have to try. I, I think maintenance is important. I do appreciate it. I did, I did take in consideration, you know, the ten years at Pelican Preserve of having those Latorals. But it's also a skew data because it's only what the improvements were, but it doesn't really say the cost. It doesn't, it doesn't give me the whole picture. And I think once we start with this document and if it does get approved, I think it's really important to us to collect the data. So in two years or three years, we can revisit and, and, and adjust as needed. I think this is going to be a living document that is tailored here and there.
Sounds me like you put it.
Sounds like you pumped it.
Anything else, Mr. Guy?
No, sir. Thank you.
Now, Chair, not his questions.
Yeah, I, I just want to remind everybody. And I guess it's sort of a question for Flavia in that the D Os are minimum requirements. And when Lee County had come out more than once and spoke with the supervisors, they were quite clear that the minimum requirement was expected to expand beyond where those plants were planted and that there is no true maximum. So I was, I'm a little concerned partly with what Jim said, that all of the Latorals should be removed back to the D O requirement when the pond was originally built. And that is not at all the direction that the board received from Lee County. So I think it would be cost ineffective to actually cut all of the Latorals back to what the D O requirement is. And that was a requirement when the pond was first built, not as it matured. So was consideration given to that?
Actually, yes, it was. We, we met with Lee County and that meeting was kind of a waste of time. They were saying all kinds of things. I had specific questions and I'm not going to get into what some of the responses were, but they were clearly wrong. And if we were to go with what they said, which was basically do whatever you want to do. If you want to spray out Latoral shells, go ahead. We don't care. If your homeowners want to go out and spray it out themselves, as long as they use a licensed person, go ahead. We don't care. And so we, it, it was frustrating because we tried to refer them back to the development code and the very specific language in the development code. And they were not aware. We put it up on the screen and they weren't aware of it. So I, I would not. We did consider that and we did talk to them. That's what I'll say. And I would not put too much credibility in that because it seems like once the pond is constructed, they're going to wash their hands. And they say, go to Florida, you know, South Florida Water Management District or beyond if you need to. So yes, we did. We did talk to them and we decided just not to follow up because it was kind of, kind of crazy.
Well, and I, and I hear what you're saying, but I think they were quite clear when they came and they came more than once and spoke before the board. And they were specifically asked, is there a maximum? And we were told, no, these were only minimum requirements. So I, I, I just, I think to give the impression that we should remove Latorals just because the D O was set at one, one amount. We're doing a disservice to the water quality, the lake bank erosion and the look of the ponds. I understand maintaining them and needing to keep them trimmed back, but to just, you know, wholesale scorched earth, remove them, I don't think that's financially or fiduciary response. I think that would be poor financial management and fiduciary responsibility of the district to do that in all the ponds.
Respond just, excuse me, to both things. First of all, the plain language of the current development code does set a maximum, sets a minimum. It says must be measured as and must is actually defined in the development code to mean mandated or is required to be. So there's, for them to say there's no maximum. Yet the plain language of the development code says, yes, there is. For, for at least currently, for current ten, ten, four eighteen. The other responses, and, and I agree, as I said, this is not flipping the switch where everything gets new. There's going to be people who want them removed. There's going to be people who want to retain them. And we fully believe and support that that should be the answer. So nobody is saying here that we should force anything, you know, force it all the way back to the D O. This is my introductory comments. We have to be practical and we have to be flexible. And there's going to be a lot of people who want to retain them and there're people who, who don't want to have them. There's many areas that don't have them at all already. And so I, I don't think at all that this is a situation of going, you know, spraying everything out that's not in the D O. That's not what we're intending here. We're intending to give homeowners a choice which, which way they'd want to go with it. And as I said, also in my comments, if it's coordinated with the, the lake bank remediation project for those ponds, it's going to take care of itself.
Yeah, that's, that is true. Now, I am curious about the implementation because I know you said that's separate from this and I can understand that. Would the implementation also include enforcement and possible consequences if people were to violate what's in this document if it's adopted, like for instance, if, if a resident goes out there and starts remove Latorals themselves?
I think kind of that question.
Did you give any consideration to, I know you're not involved in the implementation, but did the group discuss what, what possible consequences there would be if someone were to violate the?
My understanding from previous meeting from Tony, if I'm right, that the we, we don't have any authority to enforce or to find residents.
District has the authority to file action, go to court to compel compliance with district rule and policy. And we have a rule with regards to partial water management. But to the extent that we have a rule and policy, we.
We could do it. So we could.
Go to court and allege a violation of district rule.
Preparing. That's a deal on. Okay.
The technical rule is if the public, we, here's where we're talking about people dumping stuff and putting items into water management facilities without our approval. So a rule is adopted to try to break that. I can look back and.
And Margaret, I kind of want to touch back on, on your comment into regards to the Latoral. I, I also want a clarification on this. Neither, I don't think Jim either, the committee wants to remove Latoral where there is no request that was ever in there. So an example, if there's a pond that has, it's totally silenced on Latorals, a hundred residents, as long as it's maintained to that bend, but even if it's a hundred percent coverage all around, but nobody, nobody wanted to remove. The vendor is not going to go there and remove anything. It's really going to be upon request. And even though, once they requested, we, we did set some checkpoints and some marks if they have a water issue, you know, we're not going to allow it at that time because it's only going to, you know, make it worse or, or not aid if there's erosion or washout, not only of the person's property, but you know, within ten feet from the property is also is going to be a no. So it's not going to be necessarily, you know, my deal is silence behind my house, come here and remove my, my Latorals. And that was the compromise that we had it with, you know, the, the resident that totally did not want Latorals was, they also understood that removing Latorals could cause harm, could cause damages in, in the areas of the waters, water quality that it's an issue, where there's already erosion. So they understood that if they have those problems, they're not going to get the Latorals removed.
Madam Chairman, one other comment on removal of Latorals by individual companies consent mentioned that a year and a half ago in Marco Island, the resident down there where Marco Island City Lakes and parks were meant to remove a bunch of vegetation for a radio controlled bolt plug. And you, the prosecutor charged him, actually arrested for that. And I didn't follow the case, but the statute just talks about removal of vegetation or aquatic vegetation. So that might be, again, that's harsh, but that occurred, I can retrieve again, follow that case and see what ultimately happened. That was a criminal offense. Was the proper, law removal, you know, it was like a seventy eight year old guy in a car.
Excuse me, the county has those laws.
Any other question, Margaret?
I, yeah, there's one thing that I'd like for the clarification for the property owners requesting removal, that it's more clear that it would be an individual property owner requesting removal behind their property, their individual property. They can't say, I want them removed.
Agreed.
And it is, on page four, the first and the second, they, this is, they address that.
But I don't think it's actually, I would like it to be more clear that it's a property owner whose property, but not plural, and that it be behind their property only, you know, like only behind their property twice per calendar year.
So instead of saying owners, we should say a property owner, senior? Because we just said limited behind their property. You do say.
Yeah, or, or just add another blue point said, you know. Yeah, or just add another blue point said, you know, property owners may not request, you know, removal from properties that they don't own or something to that nature. Either, or I think it's clear that, but if they want that, I think it's fine.
Or we can say only behind their property.
Yeah.
Right, only behind their property.
Okay.
That would be, I could accept that. I just want it to be clear that they can't request more than behind their own individual property.
That's, that's the attempt.
That, yeah.
And Madam Chair, when, before we wrap, I just want to make a comment.
I think, was that Doug?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think you're, you're next. I think you, I, that was all I had at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, go ahead. Questions, comments?
Thank you. So again, I want to compliment the, the group for taking this on. This is, this is not an easy task and it's a polarizing issue. Matter of fact, we're probably people group for when parking comes up again, because I think you guys did a really good job working at it. And I think the one point that I want to call out is, is really the comment I think Flavia made around compromising. Because I think when you look at the DOs and the various lakes, there's a lot of variation there and to create a solid standard that works for everyone is going to be challenging, especially trying to implement something in a short amount of time. I think the approach that I would like to see taken is to, you know, which is what I think the PONs group has done, is creating a standard that can be applied across, across our holistic environment, but also be flexible. I think one of the things we should do as far as implementation is looking at piloting some of these cases and being able to fail forward. So if we, if we implement in, in a phased approach where we can get some, some data around what works, I think that's the best thing to do and, and continue to have this PONs group as an oversight committee to address, not only requests coming forward and putting forth their recommendations, but also to monitor the activity and make recommendations for, for modification. Margaret, I think I remember when the, when we had the group in, when we were talking about minimal versus maximum, I, I think I remember I asked the question if there was a maximum and if there was any diminishing returns or at a point where, you know, coverage beyond the, the minimum, if there was any additional benefit. And I think the, I can't remember her name, but she said that in, in some cases that, that there was a point, however, that's hard to determine based on, you know, the lakes and the type of lake and the waterfall and all those things. So I would just call out that in some cases, I think letting full coverage 100% around a lake may not, may not fully continue to have, you know, positive impact, especially if there's some invasive plants and other types of things. So I'm not against having instances where we're going to cut back and maintain. I do think scaling back to the original DO may not be always appropriate. I think there should be a threshold there. Whether it's, if the DO states 30%, I think we might create at least a, a, a threshold of maybe up to 60 or 65%. But that's just something for consideration. That's my personal preference. I've lived on a lake here in Gateway. Mine backed up to the easement and it wasn't really maintained and there was a lot of overgrowth. And we had issues with gators and, and really the invasive plants coming in, which, which caused a lot of problems. So, you know, I, I am in favor of maintaining and even creating some, some space so there's not 100% coverage. But again, I, I would be open to looking at that on a case by case basis. And I do agree that, that could be based on residents' inputs, whether, you know, if there's not a requirement per the DO in someone's property and they like it cut back, I think that would be up into consideration. But I think this is an organic document. I think it should be, you know, monitored and looked at frequently. I think we should pilot, phase, and then be able to have some compromise and flexibility as we move forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just would, I want to parrot something that both Bill and Doug just said, and that is, I want to compliment the committee. I know that this was hard work. I know it wasn't probably fun sometimes. But I think you did a really bang up job and there's a really great document here. So I just wanted to say thank you. That's it.
Mr. Tinkle, comments, questions?
That's a surprise. And I've been sitting here for an hour and a half this long and I said a word. I too want to compliment the Flavia and Chad in the committee. I first started reading, but I put it at the board book and thought I was going to have a heart attack. The first version, and I thought, this, this, this can't be true. But anyway, we got that corrected. I totally agree with you on the fact that this needs to be a policy document and that an implementation document is a totally separate issue. A couple of questions before I start going through. You're going to think that I don't like this thing because I'm going to nitpick, but I think it's important for the reasons I'm going to bring up. First one is, did you deal with or have conversations with any other engineers, professional engineers, landscape architects, or biologists, or any other vendors in vetting what you've written? I know you don't want to leave out Ernesto, but did you talk to anybody else?
Yes, Sally and I, we put out an invitation for a seminar that was held in Naples with Southwest Florida, South Florida Water Management District, vendor, product vendor, I think was Wetlands and Lakes. So we went to that one. We have met, the entire committee, I think, had met with Lee County, the Lee County's office. We also have, I had conversations with two professors of GCU. And one of the, our members, he does go to GCU and he is one of the partners, partner of us with him. And we got some ideas and more like implementation part, so we really didn't address it here. Have I missed anybody else?
Did you talk to Dr. Ed Hansen?
No.
He was on our last day and he's expert in this field. I'd love to have his opinion on the document. The other item is, did you use at all or review the health and reserve on standards document that would be mirroring this document?
No, we actually, we asked.
Bob.
We couldn't find them.
They couldn't find one.
I don't think we, we had components. We never had a doctor.
I'll get to that later. I think we need to add that. During your preparation, when you were getting down to the end, and a lot of this is going to come down to one thing, that's money, a lot of money. I've done my own research and I found that to implement what I believe is very similar to what you've got, is going to increase our budget about $300,000 a year. That's $50 on our quarterly or annual assessment per resident, instantaneously, quickly. We went a couple of weeks ago, months ago, in Berserk, going over $10. Went Berserk, over $10. What are we going to do over 50? Not expecting an answer to that because I know that that's your job and we're assigned to do that. But my thought is, I love the document. I think the document next goes to the vendors with a form of specification that meets this, say, what's this going to cost us? What's this going to cost us? Because if we're not going to pay the $300,000, that I believe, at my discretion, the vendors, that it's going to cost to do this, what are we wasting our time for?
And, and, and we totally agree with that. And that's when we went and we took a look at the current contract and see even what we're proposing, it's visible, you know, because we can have all those requirements, but the cost will be, you know.
That's, that's something that I think that is going to be in that implementation or going for policy implementation. Because when you go after and get that brick wall, it is going to cost that amount. I think you're going to be back and you're going to be getting red pinning. Something's got to change. Worst thing that we could do is to come up with a policy that we don't enforce. I mean, selected enforcement is what's got this place in a lot of trouble since day one, because we didn't do anything. So anyway, going on, I think that one thing that would help the document quickly would be to, I want to keep it to a reasonable length, but you just, when you're doing policy, you can shortcut. I think what you need to do is to have an appendix that one incorporates the things that are critical to this. And one would be the document that else got in our lap, the DOs. People have to have access to the DOs. So rather than putting that document into this and making it 1,000 pages incorporated by reference, that we have a location of where we can go to to look at that document. We have that list and took it out. The second thing is, and maybe you can answer the question, I, I got it marked down and Bob stole my thunder. I was going to put his paragraph in there, but he added to it. So his flavor was a little better than what I would have done. Strangely, and I don't understand why, and maybe somebody can explain to me, because I think it is a glaringly absent. Why did we leave from the last document and from the one that was drafted that didn't make the call here, regulatory standards? How do you have a policy that doesn't include the regulatory standards? So my recommendation would be to go in very quickly, take what was in your 2019 document and instead of going through this, that was an absolute farce, that this is described in here is not 10-14. This is 10-18. The word minimum is not in there, people. It's not there. So we get people who are exaggerating what they hear, sort of like what they do in Washington, and putting down something that isn't true. This is the document by which engineers, landscape architects, and developers design their standards to be 10-18. If just the Salzer and that other group down there, which I have absolute faith in as anything, they think it's so important, go to the county and change 10-18. Put 100% in there. Why did they do that? Ernesto and I have had this discussion 100 times. Nobody can produce a document that shows going greater than 25 has any cost benefit. Nobody. Nobody. Anyway, going on, I would put that standard in. Critical item in the paragraphs, I'm just going to try and go through because of the time, we're way behind. A key item in that second paragraph of under stormwater treatment ponds, a little bit alluded to a while ago, yard waste. These blow, these, these firms, I'm not going to put them all in one field, one shoe fits all, but they, they blow. When they go along the lake, they blow the grass into the lake. Yard waste. I see people go out and put palm frogs into the lake. Ridiculous. So I think yard waste needs to be added to that paragraph. You've got about everything else there except yard waste. I almost thought putting an underline under litorals, where required or involved, involved in an underline, where required by a governmental agency. I think that's great. I didn't know where to put it, but I put it at the top of page five. We need to take and have where we are doing lake bank restoration. There needs to be something done. This might be quasi-implementation, but the vendors that we've retained have got to maintain those stone surfaces. They've got to maintain those stone surfaces. When we had weeds and other stuff in the other contract and it wasn't stone, they had a responsibility to take it out. I don't know what the difference is. It's still like that.
I can explain a little bit of that if I may. I'll only, I'll make it very brief. When we did that contract, when it went out to bid, I believe you were even at the pre-bid meeting. We told contractors, go out and inspect the ponds. This is what you'll be treating. There was not one pond out there with stone at that time. At that point, they maintained from the high water level down a bare exposed bank. Now that we went in there with stone, we've increased that probably 12, sometimes more, above the 15 feet wide rather than just our.
Well, I think you're so.
So it's a whole different system than what they inspected and bid on.
When we review our specifications, we need to refer to the control elevation.
Absolutely.
That's the critical deal. Residents can do anything about the control elevation themselves. There are no limitations to that. But below the control elevation, we have a, have a problem in my opinion.
So let me ask you, is that something that you want, that we shouldn't not need to address here because you will be addressed on the contract? Or you wanted us to address it here?
I'll bring it up and we'll worry about how to get that in there and resolve it. Let's go to page six. First of all, I think the word weir is W E I R, instead of W I E R. That was great. I like the way you did this. The only thing I see is, you have mentioned ponds, and me and Tony have gone around and around on this. Ponds located in the Colonial Country Club, Potomac Lake runoff from tree line. I totally agree. Those are in our system and are influenced to our flowway. Why don't they have to comply with these standards?
And I responded before, I asked if on your country, from my recollection is that they are the permit fee on your South Florida Water Management District permit when they expanded the flowway. And so there, they have to maintain.
Just for that side.
Tree line to the.
But my point, but my point is ponds that feed in their sections, which are numerous ponds. I mean, we're talking about 50 to 100 acres just in Bridgetown.
Arborwood versus?
Arborwood and Bridgetown that are influencing our system. I find it difficult, but we want to take and apply the rules to the people that are in Gateway community, but those that are outside that are wading in the same waterway, we let them go.
We don't have authority to impose rules on them. Now, one thing you may want to check is, is any sign of more lack of Washington. Florida law, as far as we can regulate, but is to look at, may want to look at the South Florida Water Management District permits for those individual communities to see what their water quality requirement is. Maybe not litorals per se, but water quality. Because one thing I found out is that South Florida, years ago, pretty much gunned it, I'll call it, it's just recorded, they are reactive, not proactive, unless they fly over and see something that really gets their attention. But if there are water quality standards and water quality reporting requirements, that's something that's not being achieved, that needs to be brought to the attention of South Florida.
Look, here's, here's what I was hoping to, everybody's jumped on it, maybe Ernesto would. I love you putting in the set, the testing standards, which is kind of a follow over of what we talked about a long time ago. And I've got some of the documents that can help you do what Ernesto was talking about on the TSI of the original thing. My deal is, is when we're doing the testing and especially the quarterly testing, where we're doing the bank flowway, I think at six locations or seven locations, I'd like to add in the locations at where the predominance of flow from the communities that are above, that supposedly are not involved, test that water. So in other words, we're going to have Timber Creek coming in down here by Worthington. Let's test where they come into our system. Do the same TSI. You snooze, you lose. They lose, so just say, well, go after them and we'll harass them on it. Same thing at Bridgetown. Bridgetown comes all involved in 38. We go after them. Colonial's got Timber Creek. Arborwood too. Every one of these that are influenced to us, I see no reason why they should be exempted from any standards that we have to make. And then we'll cross the bridge of what we do when we find out that they don't meet.
And then that's, and Ernesto and I actually talked about that when it came to Timber Creek, to, to that wetland, because it's going to sheet flow to the wetland and that side with the pond. So let's get those data now and see, you know, where we are and then hold them accountable, which is a huge change.
If sheet flows, if sheet flows through the wetland, but there's nothing to say we can't take it flow reading out of the pond before it sheets flows. Sheet flow.
Sometimes it's going to flow on other, you know, but it's their property.
Then our deal is, we'll go to the other side and we'll take it at the point where it leads our wetland and goes into the first pond, which is I think 79 or something like that.
One other aspect also as far as concern about, legitimate concern about flows from other communities. Under the NPDES permit issued to the county, there was a central agreement among a number of community development. there was a central agreement among a number of community development districts and municipalities, which basically says each party who is an agreement entity, who was a party to that agreement, is responsible for water quality within their system. They're not supposed to discharge water to any other system that violates the criteria. So I can pull that agreement.
Well, that TSI would be a method of doing that.
So we can pull that and see. And I'm not, I'm not sure if Colonial has been checking the dump for 10 years.
Check, check the dump.
We checked the water coming from it.
Oh, okay.
For 10 years.
That, that's no good, because that's influencing our system.
But I'll, I'll pull that general agreement, see if we can pull that into that.
They are, they are, I see them at the NPDES meeting.
Okay. And then we can provide that agreement to the committee and to the board for their information. With the high school property feeding into Hampton Park, be a spot to check.
Yeah, because that would be easy, because they're going to have a flow regulator that goes into it. So that'd be, you know, right. But my point is, if we're going to have the TSI, we're going to apply it to us. Let's make it as applied applicable to everyone. And it is a good standard. And that's one of them. On page seven, you're listing these deals. And I don't know if somebody, I didn't take the time to check every one of these, because they, they're a little bit breaks. But, uh, Bob, or somebody said something about the school. Those are put into, uh, we're three or in that basin, which would be coming through Hampton Park. You've got the two ponds in Arborwood in phase four, I think they're, well, maybe, they're in three. Arborwood's two ponds are going to come into Pelican into the wetland.
We already know we have the eyes of the sharks.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, we, we got that.
The other one is basin six in Pelican's not identified here at all.
All of that, it's something that...
I'm sorry.
All of that's going to drop, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, thank you. I figured if you were in it, you would have caught it for sure. And the last one. I don't see the word aeration.
That's it.
I don't see the word. There is nothing more critical than is identified by what Pelican Reserve is doing, and that is aeration. We don't even have it in here. I think there needs to be, if nothing else, section on aeration and indicating that the path metrics be done immediately on the ponds that do not have aeration requirement right now, so we can determine just exactly what we've got. Somebody else said it, and that is, is that when we have troubles in these areas and we start failing, you know, when we were doing this, the testing, you know, go out and check these things. We would find routinely that we're five, or we're four, or one of them would end up with having a high level of this, that, or the other. A lot of it was tied up to when we were dumping, people were putting fertilizer there. But we would find those type of things. I, I agree. Do your testing on that main flowway and the seven, four, five, six items that we've identified. And only when we find out when we have a violation of any one of those triggered items, do we go upstream and then start checking each one of these. Because I can tell you, that testing cost, as we found out, is very, very, very salty. Quickly, quickly. And if we, last I saw, we were around $25,000. I would hate to see that number go up a lot more. But on the other hand, I definitely want to test these other things that need to be tested that are dumping into us. Overall, I thought you all did an excellent job with it. I would propose adding those two, the, the 10-4-18 standards under regulatory standards. Reword that how you want, and then have an appendix by which we make reference to the things like what L talked about. Since this document is not inclusive, Pelican Reserve are references, we don't have to worry about city park owners. They're not, they're not involved in this whatsoever. So the only thing that we have to do is worry about Lee County and South Florida Water Management. I'll tell you, I think you guys did a great job.
We do want to give you guys an update on, we have one, two, we have five items that we have updated. And one is the table of contents, the flow that you see here. Bob and Tyler were able to review it, and we have three, four, or five ponds that have...
Yeah, we, we already did it.
So we have a real, just we just didn't send it out. That is one thing. I guess another item that we have was clarification on, we talked about, you know, laterals plants must not exceed the three feet in height. I, staff need a clarification, you know, are we measuring above water, you know, below water from ground? And we're open to...
I think you have to go control elevation. And the problem you've got is, uh, Pelican has it over there on your golf course, we have it on ours. And that is the alligator flag. That stuff will get out there and it'll be six feet tall. If it's six feet tall when the water levels are down at the winter time, but it's usually not there in the winter. But when the water levels come up and it's six feet tall, it's... So if you could, I think their baseline would be controlled elevation.
The way we handle that, and over there, I don't know about split one here. If it, if the shoreline is in either a conservation area or the golf course, we do nothing. It can grow and the size of what's...
On the golf course?
On the golf.
See, we don't allow, because you can't see the, you can't see the airway.
Well, the only time we have adjusted is when we made up here with the tee box. And that's been what, five and 11 here?
We had, we, that's, that's what I'm talking about on our golf course. We have about four tee boxes that when it grows, you can't see. Anyway, overall, I think we did a great job. The other one that L that you might want to put into the exhibit is this document that shows all of our ponds. Hard to see it, she did. Shows all of the ponds and what their status, whether their aeration requirements, D O requirements, linear feet of... Shoreline, the whole nine yards.
We, we've got any direction when it came to the algae, the document, we stated a 5% maximum coverage. I know Ernest talked about the 25%. So what is the board's feedback on that? Do we want to do 25? Is it not feasible? Five cost wise, I mean, if we're...
Target to the DO with the forms. If there's a requirement of the 25%, you have 25% laterals out there, then move the 5% to 25. When you don't have laterals, 25% will never fly in my neighborhood. Now, they're, they're mad when it goes 1%. So that might be the easy way of doing it. Where you have laterals and it can, hide itself into the laterals or blend into the laterals. I could see going 20, 25%. But where you have a pond that does not have lateral requirement, you go 25% and you'll have chaos.
Yeah.
And I guess inspections of the wetland are either monthly, quarterly, or, or just...
We do it twice a year.
Twice a year.
Our are maintained quarterly, and I try to inspect them at least every 15 minutes. I don't want things to grow and get out of control before I catch it. But that's, that's me. That doesn't have to be in the standards, but at least make, at least a quarterly or by annual maintenance.
Okay, and then I, and I do want to touch within the aeration, we did, we did mention aeration, actually on page four. When we talked about... Actually, on page six, on the second, third bullet point. We talked about, you know, solutions to improve the water quality can include aeration, nano bubbler. So, so it is something that we want, you know, we want to look at. And it's beginning to my conversation, we don't want to say, you know, you have water issues, laterals. That's not a fix for all of it. So we, we were looking into that. That's everything else. I don't think we had any other.
One other comment. Then you alluded to the incorporation of the linear feet and the acre to the ponds. Pelican is currently working on that because whoever you ask has their own number. So we're compiling the district's numbers, we're going to bid our aquagenics numbers, solitude's numbers, and we're going to consent on the number. And we're going to publish that, we're telling everybody, this is now how we commonly refer to either the linear feet or the acres, because they bid their contracts, you're absolutely right.
One, one reason for doing that is you can have a subset of that, the ponds that have lateral requirements, put that linear footage of the PLS in there.
So we're...
So that they know what the bid is, not only if linear feet, but if square feet.
Well, I've got the three inputs, but I haven't synthesized down to come up with common language. But you're right, you need to do that.
All right, so after us, we'll make your changes and have it, and we'll send...
Thank you very much. Appreciate.
And the next, the next step would be, uh, set a date for a public hearing. Yes?
Oh, yeah. No, go ahead. Go right ahead. Finish what you're starting.
We'd set a date for a public hearing. We would adopt the pond standards by resolution. We would take those standards and incorporate them into a new bid document and put the entire contract out for bid, referencing the pond standards and those performance standards.
How fast can you get this back to us in a revised?
Monday.
Easily.
Can you do it anywhere?
Monday. We actually kind of have it halfway there.
We actually started doing this...
We'd have to advertise it for two weeks. We could do it possibly on the 16th of July or the 1st of August.
How soon do you have to have the document that you're going to be having the public hearing on, on file before the advertising?
Ready to submit to the board book on Tuesday, because the, the agenda's put together on Wednesday.
Can you see it next week?
Yes, sir, and it has to be published by Thursday. Oh, the public hearing has a longer note.
No, no, they just changed the statute with regards to whether we post it online effective next day or the agenda has to be posted. So as far as meeting, we're going to, the agenda has to be posted. I think there was a black hour, so...
Then back to Monday, not tomorrow.
Your, your problem is, I hate when I'm sitting on that side of the fence. I hate having a public hearing on a document that I haven't had a chance to read. So whether or not we don't have to by law, I'd still like to have it available for the public to read way before that meeting. If you guys could...
The latest by Monday.
We could set the public hearing on the 6th. As part of the meeting, and that would give several weeks.
Oh, we have a budget too, right?
A budget, the public hearing is on the 20th.
So let, so let me ask this, so would have... Women not want, I know, women not want to adopt this if we're not going to have the budget for it, which goes to your point of like, why create this one, we can have it. So maybe we can have it for you guys by tomorrow. And once the staff receives it tomorrow, it goes out for a bid to a price on what that is. And it still goes into the agenda, and then hopefully by the time that the meeting comes, you have a, a cost and you have the document, and then you have the budget, and you can kind of use the items to make a decision.
You're talking July 16.
The, the only problem with that scenario is, is that the top side of our budget is as good established.
Right.
So it's going to be Rob Peter to pay Paul if we have a number that comes in that's topsy-turvy to what these, you said, water. But I don't know any other way to do it. I, let's go that step-by-step process, and if it happens, it happens. And then we try to figure out a way to figure out how we reduce the impact of the policy.
Well, one of the things, you know, before going out to the bit of something I mentioned earlier, coordinate the lake bank remediation with this, you know, that obviously is going to have a huge impact on the bid. You say that these six ponds, you have the Thrin, Silver Lakes, and the other three that are out there, they're all in phase two, except for one of them. They're going to get remediated, so you don't have to take anything out, you don't have to worry about it. The remediation process is going to take care of that, assuming it gets done, you have next round. Which would be probably a big priority.
The one that's got me about it right now is, we've got one heck of a lot of ponds already done with a lot of stone, a lot of linear feet, a lot of square footage. What's the cost of removing all of those weeds or treating all those weeds? That is a big ticket on it.
Say something. Was it okay? Aquagenics on page 18 of their contract. The way I read it is that they should be taking care of all that. That's the way I read it. I just asked. Just you make a hard copy. But when I read it online, I thought that's what they're supposed to be taking care of.
I mean, that was also my interpretation, and I shared that with, with Ed as well. I felt like, and that's kind of, I was going to pass that to Tony, because if you have a contract and, and whatever the contract says, it goes. The intention of it, it doesn't matter, you know, what's it there and what was signed, it's, we have to hold it accountable. They knew that we're putting rock.
Yeah.
They could have been proactive and, you know, they could have said, hey, listen, we want to clarify before you even start, so you can have this as a thought. The contract that we have now does not cover this. But that didn't happen, you know? So Tony needs to revise the contract and look at it and see. I, I, I think that was a suggestion that we had done at the last meeting, and I thought that was what we were doing it, but...
18 in the contract does address that, and that's how I feel. It is addressing.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is, Chris, you know, alluded to, we need to, we have to take and create a new pond specification that reflects these standards, put all that in. They may not be perfect, and I look for perfect right now, just get it done with quantities to give to two or three vendors, so we find out what the sticker shock's going to be.
And that, that bid process is 45 days, and then 15 days advertisement and 30 days to provide the bids and digest them, so...
But that does impact our budget at this point, because you can't change it at this point.
No, and the only option really would be look at taking care of forward funds to fund that contract.
Or we can phase it out like Doug said. So...
Margaret, may I make another suggestion, please?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have the public hearing on July 23rd, if you don't want to have it on the 16th.
That would be setting another board date.
I know it would, but it's still, if we don't do it the 16th, we're doing it three, almost four weeks later. So this way it's...
Then we get it out to the public to read it.
I'm just trying to get it so that it's...
We'll get it, we'll get it to come back tomorrow.
It'll be done.
We're already working on the bid specs and tightening them up for all those nebulous definitions in there.
So we're going to have the public hearing on the 16th, are you fine for it?
Set it during the regular meeting.
16th? Okay, that's fine. I just didn't want to wait till the...
That one by now?
Yeah, 16th.
Oh.
Are you guys okay with that?
And we're going to make that late in the day again? Are we going to make that late in the day like at 5:00 for public hearing?
You don't have to, it's just the board that wants you to.
Well...
I think you want the residents here, go to the later.
We'll, we'll make a motion during the regular meeting.
5:00 is what we've normally done for public hearings. I think that's good.
Thank you, Margaret.
Give the opportunity to be involved in it if they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move into the regular meeting, can we take a five-minute break, please?
Yeah, hey, Margaret, what was that date? It was July?
16.
16.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
And that'll be at 5:00, is that what I heard?
That's 5:00 PM.
Yeah, the public hearing.
Okay.
One more thing, is, since, the only thing that I probably would need from Tony is if you want to add a language in this document.
Yeah, but it's, it's probably implementation, I probably want to... We can put that in the regulations that it's all...
Okay, so that will be...
Again, I want to thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Five-minute break and the workshops in turn.
Thank you. In a different language for this.
That was very important.
We can do that, and then we'll talk to them, we're going to check it, and then we'll come back.
I'm trying to get votes. Call me Donald.
So we'll go ahead, yeah.
We have animals that are chewing up our earth.
Well, you know, I'm talking about...
Yeah, we have others, and we're, we're assuming that's going to be the one that's on the bottom.
That's a leaving time, man. That's a leaving time, man. Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't do it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem. It's easy enough to handle. No, I get it. I'm the same way. I'm the same way. Mine, I left leftovers for me. Yeah, I left. I have leftovers. I made enough last night. I got to leave by 5:30, so. I'll go quick. I just have to stop at CBS. Going there. Yeah, she knows me by saying, like, I walk in and she's like, hey, I've seen you for a while. My kids get scripts. And I. She goes, I miss seeing you like every week.
Yeah, I know. I just, I mean, finally it's coming out of this. I feel like.
And I think just no vote for me and my husband, you know, it's just.
I go along quietly before I was like. I just want someone to end it before we leave.
I know. Yeah, I'll make it short and sweet so that I can go home.
Oh, I have, no, I have lots of questions to show you. Come here. You think I'm kidding? I have to go home. People, my neighbors had deliveries of food on dry ice. So it's in my house. Look at. These are my, these are just little notes so that I can guess. Do I have a lot? Not, not many. No, you know what? A couple of them are protected. I'm not here. Or is Danny Don calling him? I don't know. I thought he was.
Okay, let's round everybody back up.
Okay, we're here.
Okay, it's 5:25. So we'll call the regular meeting order.
We are equal terms. Did you get it? Okay. Yeah. According to Chris Shields, that's what we are. I don't know why, how it got confused. Well, I say that.
Okay, Chris, is everybody still online? Is Mr. Guy and Mr. Banks still with us?
Yeah, 10:04.
Yes, Mr. Guy is just sitting back down. Mr. Banks is here.
Thank you. Okay, I will turn it over to you. Is there any audience comments?
Yes, we do have audience comments. We have today. Eileen Kaylin is here. She'd like to speak. She's online. Would like to speak about an agenda item, really the pool hours. And Ed Cecil is here. And I'll introduce Mr. Cecil first, and he has five minutes. And I think he wants to address opening the pool at 7:00 AM versus our recommendation of 8:00 AM. Mr. Cecil?
Thank you very much, Ed Cecil. First of all, agree and support the comment. Mrs. Kaylin has made an email to all of you. Does everybody receive an email from Eileen, myself, Chris Reynolds? Did you see that one? Fred Cody? If you got both of ours, that should be sufficient. Okay. Basically, I'm just going to go over this very quickly. We've already seen it. It appears we will remain at this stage for reopening for a while. Your consideration of pool hours preferably 7:00 AM to accommodate people working with limited access to the pool is appreciated. We are pressed with the current atmosphere and effort to maintain social distance. We realize that current operating procedures are following Lee County rules. However, as a private district, we are able to have flexibility in how our facilities operate. There are other pools being operated different hours for swimming. The people swimming at 7:00 AM are interested in one thing, serious swimming. Congregating and socializing is of no interest. Swimming anywhere between 25 to 32 laps for one mile appears to be the goal. And then is out of the pool and back home to work, or in my case, get on with their day. I personally can't think of a safer place to be at 7:00 AM than a 25 meter pool swimming laps. It certainly beats shopping at a big box store. Just one other thing. I was out walking at 6:04 this AM, and I can assure you the sun cleared the horizon before 7:40. Check it tomorrow. It's probably less than that at the pool. This issue on lighting requirements came up at the last minute. I just talked to Chris about it. We have an engineer that we can get on that to look at that for you. The, what do you call it? The, the lighting illumination.
Candle power at the pool surface.
Right. Okay. So, and in our discussion, I think what's needed is that we have an assessment of the lighting at the pool. Are we talking about something major or something minor? I guess that pretty much sums it up anyway. We would like to see the pool hours 7:00 AM to whenever. Okay, I don't know. How many hours you want to keep it open or what?
And we did get a couple, couple of comments too, that there were concerns because some of the pool users are sun challenged, meaning they can't be out in bright, direct sunlight. So the fact that we've been open at 9:00 AM sometime presents a problem to them.
That's it. You know, this is another thing I was going to bring up. One time I went up there and swam laps. I don't know what it was after, after nine. I came back and the first thing my wife said, what did you do to your back? I mean, I just burned a crisp. You know, of course, I was in there an hour, you know, swimming. But, I mean, that's another reason, you know, for the 7:00 AM. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's just not beating down on you at that time. It's hard.
Okay, question. And if we do this, and we've got the issue of the 30 minutes, I think it was 30 minutes after, that would be the one that comes into play. We're not worried about the late evening. I had written down some notes that if we did that, would we be able to say, go to 7:00 AM between April 1st and September 30th? Or is that too long and would violate the 30 minutes?
Well, it would depend on the time of sunrise. And what it really is, is our permit states no nighttime swimming. So then you get into that definition.
I'm worried about the early mornings. What I'm worried about is if we go seven o'clock, can we go at seven o'clock for that six month period and meet the 30 minutes is my question.
I'd have to look up the sunrise times at that.
What I would do, or I would say something.
It will vary by day to day.
I know, I know that includes a minute a day.
20th, whatever, first day of summer is the longest and you sort of deal with it back. You have to go by that 30, not 40.
Okay. Well, I can do it the other way. What I was trying to avoid is having a by month that goes from 7, 7:15, 7:30, doing that. I was trying to avoid that. But it may be that that's the way we have to do it. It's just go seven o'clock, subject to the deal and announce it in 15 minute increments.
And it's, it's pretty much the same group that's there early in the morning. So as long as they are informed.
And then the other one would be later on to make a motion to go get the pricing to see what it just costs like that to meet the minimum requirements for opening.
Yeah, I'm, I happen to be an optimist. I, I happen, I happen to be an optimist. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but we'll find out.
I can't picture beating that expensive to light that pool.
I'm not so, you have to understand what the, what the standard is. Three, three feet or three foot luminos or whatever they are. Okay. It's not that much.
I know.
Well, you're the engineer.
Yeah, not electric.
Oh.
It's saltwater. But I, I agree. I think it can be done fairly quickly. The pictures that you showed today, if they sent me on the soccer field with those LEDs, it looks like the sun's rising over there on that soccer field. They're bright. So it's not going to take that much. My question is how high the pool is going to go.
We can look at that in the next few months, but we have it on the agenda to consider, you know, the board to make determination on the hours they want to operate the pool.
Yeah.
Um, can I chime in? Hello?
You want to wait till Mr. Cecil finishes?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I thought he was done. Sorry about that, Ed.
That's okay. That's okay. Just one, one other thing. I've been here 20 years. And that pool, according to the webpage, has been open from 7:00 to 7:00. Okay. And, you know, I, I guess my question is if we ever had an incident here, that we ever had an emergency or anything like that. You know, in all that time. And now that, you know, I understand people changing everything and Chris is looking at it. That's his job. But it's, it's just a little discouraging. And if push comes to shove, I just want everybody to know, if you want to hold harmless agreement from me, okay, I'm happy to sign it. Okay, I just want to go swimming and get the exercise, get out of my life.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cecil. Questions?
I was just gonna, I'm just looking at the weather channel. Okay, sunrise is at 6:40. It starts one day to 6:43. It's going up. It's 6:44 next Thursday. So I'm just giving you what type of sunrise is.
That would be a 7:15 open.
Yeah.
Just means we would have been going to have to be very scheduled to meet the 30, but that's, that's not the possible calculation.
Okay, and we have one other resident, Eileen Kaylin. She would like to address this subject too. Please do. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, great to be able to join the meeting virtually. And just happy to have a chance to address the board. I am an avid swimmer. I've been living in Gateway for about 20 years and been swimming in the pool, averaging three to five miles a week. Most weeks. A lot of those hours were logged at the 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM timeframe. And I do know, you know, it, the sun darkness is a factor in this, in the late fall, that, that couple of weeks before the time change. But even when it is, the sun is not even up yet or just on the horizon, the lighting in that pool is actually very good. Now, I know you're saying it's not permitted and it has it to, according to the permit, it's not meeting the requirements. But I've been in that pool and it, there's multiple underground or underwater light fixtures and the lighting overhead, you know, is adequate. Now, I'm not an electrical engineer. Some of my good friends are. I could get one on speed dial now and, and have them educate me on what the actual lighting requirement would be. But I, I feel like before we, before we go ahead and change those hours permanently, that we look at that and we look at where we're at with it. I'm happy that the services district has taken the COVID-19 precautions so seriously and we all want to support that and respect that. My concern is that we're, seems to be like almost using the COVID-19 precautions as a way to permanently alter the schedule of the pool and restrict the hours for the residents. And I, I would like that to be very transparent. If, if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. But I don't feel like using the COVID-19 reopening process is fair to residents. I think we need to, you know, if it was open 7:00 to 7:00 before, as we return and we're following the social distancing, we're following the limits, we should be able to return to 7:00 to 7:00 unless, you know, we look at, at the lighting issue. So until we get that confirmation or until we get some kind of assessment of what the current lighting is, I feel like taking that away from residents without transparency is not very fair. So that's my request. If we could return to 7:00 AM for at least, or if it has to be 7:15, but, you know, this, if we could just be, get that pool open earlier in the morning. So people like me that work full time or people that have childcare or caregivers to other people have an opportunity to get up there and swim. It is a very used, it has been a very well-used pool and it's very, been very well-maintained. And if there were transgressions in the past by people pushing the limits or not respecting the hours, that's unfortunate. But I feel like we're paying for the mistakes that other people have been, have made in the past.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Obviously, it's Doug. I mean, I, I am in favor of opening the amenities for the times that our residents are using them. I mean, for all intent purposes, that pool is probably built more for a lap and activity pool. So I have no issues with expanding those hours. As a matter of fact, it's something that we, that we should be looking at as dedicated lap hours at certain times during the day, whether it's in the morning or, or whenever. But to me, this is, this is a no brainer.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fanger, could we go to the agenda item? Would that be a possibility?
It does involve a little more. There's also discussion on soccer and complex and a few other related.
I can discuss pool first.
Want to bring it up? If you want to move it up the agenda.
I have no problem moving it up. All the people are here and doing it. I'd make the motion if we're moving it up, I'd make the motion that we open it to seven o'clock such to the limitation of the requirements on sunlight.
In regards to the pool hours, we were following accounting. I didn't speak to the county person, reason they went to their hours to COVID originally. But then they had to give their lifeguards up to be counselors because they furloughed a lot of people. So we looked at the pool hours and what we could do. So we looked at the pool hours and what we could do. Reason why 8:00 to 6:00 is due to sunlight. I'm not worried about sunlight then affecting it at 8:00. Because like you say, every day, you want to have hours more or less up and down. The 6:00 closure was due to, I was told to save money. Right now, I got two part-timers, one full-time. You go anything longer than 8:00 to 6:00, because you remember, your people got to get there an hour before and stick around a half-hour later. Get everything cleaned up, get it ready to go, and shut it down. That comes up to be two part-timers, one full-time, you're at 82 hours a week. Part-timers can do 25 hours max. You wish to increase it back to the old days where we're 7:00 to 7:00, wherever the case might be, I have to hire another person.
I could, the hour, my motion would be to just cut the hours back on the, on the backside.
I can do 7:05 to 6:00, I mean, if you want.
May, may I ask why there was money in the budget before for the hours and there's not money in the budget now? What has changed?
What, what, and I'll go ahead and address it, but what, what he's saying is, is we'll have to have that third person. And typically, we've had the part-timers to cover that, and that position is in the budget this year. And the board's been trying to cut back. So and of course, at the, going into the winter, you would go back to a 5, 5:30 closing because of the sunlight issue. So it's seasonal for the closing of the pool as well as the opening. But we could do the 7:00 to 7:00 under the existing budget. But we do get pressure from the board to make cuts this year.
7:00 to 7:00 is, is possible?
It is, I just have to work the two part-timers longer than 25 hours, as long as neither one of them wants to push the benefits.
So would we stay within the budget?
Yes.
I, I go along with that, then.
7:15, I'm just thinking for.
That's a pretentious question, that part didn't change. That was just a number.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and one thing to add there too, is I, I'd like to get Tony maybe to weigh in on what is our liability? Because we don't have lifeguards. We've got pool attendants. So their job isn't there to, to act in any lifesaving capacity. They're there to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're there just to really be a, for facility oversight.
Yeah, mine, if standing is that the state of Florida, state authority scheme and ministry of code cannot require lifeguards, because I'm probably wrong. And I believe we've had this conversation with the district's insurance carrier in the past, provided we have a sign saying no lifeguard, swim at your own risk, and a lot of other warnings and caveats that, you know, and a lot of those signs. I think the, we've had a conversation with the carrier a few years back about that. That you can never totally eliminate, or you try to minimize, like.
Yeah. And, and my point to that, my point to that is, Brian, today, what time does a pool attendant arrive at the pool today?
Well, we open at 9:00, they're normally there by 8:00, they're late.
So.
We're normally there until about 4:30.
Okay, so the, the conversation I have with Chris and, and I'm just, we just had a brief conversation. You know, the prep for the pool today, there, there's no chemicals that are added in the morning because we've, we've got that automated. So for the, the prep for a swimmer would be going in, putting their key in the card, going in and just being able to jump in the pool. Unless there's additional prep for the pool itself, I don't know if you've got to get to the pool an hour early for lap swimmers to be able to leverage it. So, and I could be wrong, I'm just trying to, to look at the hours. You could have someone literally get there at 6:45, open the gate, just do a quick walkthrough, do their regular morning prep, but allow lap swimmers to come in. So it could augment, you know, instead of an additional hour of time, or two hours, whatever, that could be minimized just due to the level of effort that would be to be taken in the morning for a lap swimmer to go in and enter the pool. And maybe we dedicate that time from 7:00 to 8:00 is lap swimmers only.
I, well, Brian was saying about, we, we have an automatic.
We do, but you still have to do the size, you still have to skim it, you still have to get the bird poop off of from the birds landing in the water. There's a lot of prep work out of that pool that people don't realize, plus.
But it doesn't have to be done before, it could be done when there's a lull.
Or during. Yeah.
I mean, because I know there are times during the day when people are not there. My other thing is, you're going to open up the pool more, you're going to open the bathrooms too, right?
Now we're back to.
We have to have the bathrooms open.
We have bathrooms open, but not all of them.
It's the changing rooms.
Changing rooms, the only thing open, there is bathrooms in there.
Okay, so there are bathrooms that are going to be open?
You have bathrooms open right now.
Okay, I just want to, because somebody tell me they, they were not.
We do have bathrooms open. And what, what we did is basically the bathrooms with the changing areas, you have to individually go in the individual stalls, which is on by the lake, those two restrooms over there.
Okay, so we can go to 7:00, 7:00, and the budget allows it, might be, let's, let me get a change, just do it.
And, and I want to mention, it doesn't, the legal aspect of it really isn't the lifeguards, it's our operational permit. Our permit to operate that pool says no nighttime swimming on it. And that's issued by Lee County, and that's where we got into that. No nighttime, it seems daytime is considered 30 minutes after sunrise, 30 minutes before sunset.
Yeah, I don't think we're disputing that, Chris, I think the, I think we understand that. It's just about opening the pool up early.
It'd be like 7:15, it gets pushed 10 minutes, quarter and a half.
Move with the tide, with the sun.
Fall back, you do the same thing on the other end, have it closed on that. It's not wrong.
So Ed had a motion on the floor, and I'll second it.
I have, I, I think Mr., I think Mr. Guy had a comment.
I have a question, how many swimmers might we see there at 7:00 if we open it?
Seven or eight? Probably about five or six. Five or six regulars?
Okay, so we're going all through all of this for five or six swimmers, is that so?
It'll vary.
7:10. 7:10, Bill.
Well, and that's about the halfway too. So, I mean, the, the pool can't hold, but so many lap swimmers at one time anyway.
And the social distancing isn't the issue because at that time of the morning, the only people there are people swimming laps.
I have a, I have a question regarding employees. Because you made the comment that you, you know, part-timers are 25 hours or less. If we go to 7:00 to 7:00, those part-timers are going to be more than 25 hours, is that correct?
Correct.
And if they work more than 25 hours, then we need, then they're no longer part-time and they are entitled to full benefits.
You have one full-time person right now.
That's what I said earlier, I'd be willing to change that, that if it's going to go over the budget, we cut it out on the backside, it would be set in 7:00 to 7:06, 7:05.
If you go 7:00 to 7:00, you get 13 and a half-hour days, including the employees earlier. You do the 40 from that with, you're down to 26 hours for the part-timers. I think you'd be fine with the two you have, you know, counting extra hour.
Well, and, and again, in most pools and, I mean, and I did it from when I was 14 to, you know, through college. Worked at pools and was a beach guard. So, and I just got the minimum wage. So, I mean, I think we can get created there too, if we have to add additional part-time individuals, you know. I, I think there's options here. And that's for, that's for qualified lifeguard that's, that's training, not just a, a pool attendant, so. I think we can do it, I think we're spending way too much time on that.
Right. But I think there's a lot of moving parts here. I don't have any problem opening earlier, but I think we need to limit the hours until we can bring on another part-time person on the back end. Or I think if we're, we may get ourselves into trouble if we're making part-time employees full-time. That's, that's my concern. I don't have any problem opening early, but at least until we, we work it out, we should close earlier.
Brian, pardon if you couldn't hear, Brian, Brian said that if we make it 7:06, we eliminate that problem. So I would revise the motion to make it 7:06 and avoid that issue.
And we would go back to seven days a week, not Tuesday, Thursday.
These seven days a week.
Seven days a week, and effective starting Monday morning.
Do you want social distancing? Which means you want chairs out or you want to keep the ways that is.
We need to have long chairs out, and they can be, they can be separated far apart so that people who get out of the pool want to sit down for a few minutes, maybe dry off.
They did that at the country club, Brian, and they had a stipulation, you don't move the chairs.
Right.
Don't touch them.
Okay.
And then just, could you put a sign too, that shows where the bathrooms that are open are, and say only one person can go in at a time?
Well, we can open the bathrooms back up too, then. That's not a problem. I know your pool is, I was up there over the weekend. No social distancing either, probably. I was there, trust me.
I'm just thinking that sometimes, I'm sorry, Margaret. May I continue? Margaret?
Go ahead.
Sometimes when you have older people swimming, they need to use the gestures, okay? So if we extend it and we have those people coming in early, then we might need to have those gestures. I'll second.
So.
7:06, starting Monday.
Starting Monday.
I have to call you.
And, and I guess my question is, because of our permit, does that need to be 7:15?
Yeah, I think you're good now, the 30 days it might have to be 7:15, but we'll cross that bridge we get to.
Okay.
I understand, you want to comply with the hourly deal, but right now, I know I get up, it's easily, easily like at 6:15. So that's way more than 30 minutes.
So in trying to move this item, you, you amended your motion. Doug, do you agree with that as the secondor?
Yeah.
So we have motion on a second.
Chris?
6:00, yes.
7:06, starting Monday.
Starting the Monday. And we'll go ahead and call the vote. Miss Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes, we spend $222,000 a year running this pool, let's make everybody as happy as we can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Sheriff Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
5:00, motion carries, pool is open.
Thank you, Brian.
We'll take care of it.
I know we discussed the park. While I'm here.
Excuse me, Margaret?
Yes.
You want to continue with 4D and finish all of it? Brian is.
I think we need to go to. Brian's probably wanting to go home. Uh, yeah, that's fine.
He, he said 7:06, and he's really getting close.
We'll, we'll take care.
Okay.
We'll just stay on this, you will be here.
And we'll, we'll continue with the other half of the agenda. Margaret, is that okay?
Oh, please, man. Yeah!
Okay.
Hey, that was easy.
The soccer park is the other issue. If you're not aware of it, we were out there last night, thanks to Billy, we fired a new lights up, the LED lights looked awesome.
I couldn't believe that.
The new residents will love it because the back fields are not as bright as the front ones, but heck. The LED looks like nice, and with the guy telling me 10 to 15 years, pretty much it's what the last, they got 50,000 hours on those bulbs.
Did you call the airport to make sure that the lights?
They're not as bright as the ones that were there.
Believe it or not, we went from a 1,500-watt bulb down to a 450. The savings went from probably about 25, 30,000 a year. I think Billy figured it out, it was 88 amps, if the old one's down to, what was it?
28? 25.
So what the hell would it be? Great job, guys. The Gateway Soccer Complex over here. You're not aware of what's happening since COVID? We got everybody in our brother trying to use these fields. We got every soccer coach, because they can't get on other fields over here. We got people jumping the fence at the dog park to get on when the park's closed. But I got employees coming up here to close it, getting in confrontations with people not wanting to leave. So now you got to call the police to make that happen. We recommend a few options, and these are just up for grabs. You can turn the parks over to the county and wash your hands from it, and you'll save about 300,000 a year. You want to keep it, we suggest hours of 8:00 to 6:00. Or if you want to do, like I say, the pool closes at 6:00, they come over here, we'll definitely have it ready to go and close it. Or you can do like we do at the pool, you put up gates and people checking you in and out. It's like reserving fields, if you're not allowed to reserve it, you're not getting in unless you're a resident and show your ID that you can get in. We get a lot of people here as non-residents, a lot of them. Other suggestion would be, and I had this experience at the city, you can leave it wide open and we put bathroom locks with timers on them at certain hours, those doors lock automatically, then your people are not in harm's way trying to throw people off these fields. Then you just put more money in the sod down the road. You'll save the overtime by dispatching, but you'll probably make up for it for additional sod. The last thing I would do is throw people out of here, because you start that and you have people damaging and doing other things to your property. We don't want to go that road. So.
Are any of the people that are out there, because I got involved with this with Sheriff's Office, I think Carmine was told to click his heels and get out here and stop that. The issue is, is that are any of those people calling in here and asking what our hourly rates are?
No. No. What we, what we found out is, there's men. K-ball league games, bad, we ask them to leave, they're nicer, the gardener folks. But most times the folks coming across 82 that come into here, you come in here on certain days or lined up. Last time, since there's only one go-out, they took our garbage cans and made goals out of garbage cans. It's, then you get up here and no English, luckily Glenn does, so he can speak. Tell them, hey, y'all need to get out and close the fields. Basically, he called me one day, said, Glenn, just leave it, lock the bathroom doors and leave it, or call the police, what else can you do?
What, what would you recommend doing?
I recommend you put automatic locks on your bathroom doors that lock at certain hours and just leave the gates wide open. The police do patrol, me and Bill were up here last night, 9:30, I saw the police go by. To keep your people from getting in harm's way, it wouldn't be worth it, especially with today's going on. I mean, when we get phone calls down at the dog park, when we had to park clothes, they were down there climbing over the fence to get on. Get teenagers dragging our goals from the parking lot back out on the field.
So you're, you're putting the timers and the locks just to control the damage to that possible deal?
Yeah, because it's a city and you probably won't have as bad as out here. We'd have the bums going there shooting up and lord knows, all night long. So it was easier, they had automatic locks in certain hours, and Coons does it. Those doors get locked up, if you get stuck in, you can't get out, the door's going to lock back. And the bathrooms will stay protected, you don't have the damage to your facilities.
You don't think there's any way of, of getting any revenue?
You can charge more. I mean.
No, I mean, if they don't come to us to pay anything, why would they pay anymore?
Exactly.
Is there a way to do that? It is just impossible to do.
Well, the only thing I know is, is we turn around, put card readers over there and we have gate attendants or park attendants like we do at the pool, and you have to spend money and have people there. My personal opinion is, we either turn it over to county, let the county deal with it. I do know, Tim at the pool told me what they're doing to Kate, they got so fed up with it, they just left everything open, said, go have fun. These are people tired of going through the same thing every day with people.
I mean, it's, it's difficult to, to regulate. I mean, and even if we put key cards in, all it takes is one resident and 20 people to open up the gate, and, and then you're, you're in. So there's, it's very difficult to even enforce permits and, and rentals on that. I mean, and Brian, I, I'm kind of, I'm with you. I mean, I, I think the problem that we run into is we start regulating these amenities to the point where it's a deterrent for the residents who actually want to use them. I mean, the same thing with the pool. I mean, even closing at 6:00, I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't get off work till 6:00, they want to take their kids up to the pool in the afternoon. And, and now, you know, we can't do that because we got to have a pool, you know, someone there. So I think the best course of action, and we can monitor it, and I've lived in this community for a long time, and the, the only acts of vandalism that I've ever seen is, I think on two occasions, we had someone drive their car on the fields and do donuts. But we, we solved that problem by putting in barriers. I can't remember. Um, I can't remember there ever being an issue of any other vandalism. Um, at least nothing major. So I think we just leave everything open, uh, monitor it. And we've got police patrol. We just need to, you know, let them know that the parks are open and they'll need to, you know, maybe incorporate that in their routes. And then we just see what happens. I mean, because there's no other way we can, we can do it. Unless we put a dome on it, you can't keep people out.
Are you, are you saying to even not lock the restrooms then?
No, I want to lock the restrooms. I think that's a good point. You know, if you want to lock anything, you, you want to lock anything where someone can get into or, you know, uh, take them outside of, of public view. Um, now, uh, and at night, I tell you what, if you're, if the lights are off and you're worried about someone going on that field, uh, the first time an owl or other, because there's a lot of activity on those fields at night when the lights are off. Uh, so I think that that within itself will be a deterrent, but uh, I, I think we just open it up, lock the bathrooms down and, and see how it, see how it goes. The one issue would be during the summer or when there's times where we've got maintenance, where you've got to, um, you know, isolate some fields uh for maintenance activity. That would be the only time that I would probably close it down or, because it's going to be, it's hard to even isolate certain fields. But I think, um, Brian, what you guys are doing as far as leaving, you know, just a, a limited amount of goals up might, might be a solution uh as well, but you know, I don't know. I just think we got to monitor it and see what happens.
You making that motion?
I, I will, yep.
Margaret, I got a question. Lights, we not.
Go ahead, ask the question.
Yeah, I have a question. Lights, can we make sure the lights don't go on at night?
They won't be on unless you.
Unless you pay.
You have to pay the lights, you gotta have a key to turn the lights on. I mean, basically what will happen is it's dark, the dark most time the people just leave anyway. It's got dark. But what happens is we've been closing about eight o'clock and we got a rate around eight thirty, quarter to nine for people to leave because they don't want to leave. And if you call the police and you got to bring them up here and it's getting to be, we don't want to go through that.
Margaret, uh, Miller's motion, I think Doug made it.
I'll send it.
Just a, what we may want to do also is have Chris to contact district's carrier, insurance carrier as to whether it's, if we leave it wide open. So not to have a treaty or something that, whether it's not supposed to trespassing signs to do something else to try to minimize liability. So I can see a scenario where someone goes on there, it's ten o'clock at night, it's dark, they trip on the sprinkler head, we get a notice of claim, whether the, you know, if they're not, if they're, if they're approaching, well, they're wide open, then are they an invitee? If it's invitee, you need to make it safe. Trespasser, it's a different animal. So we need to.
We do have signs up, say park closes certain hours. I mean, you got that already?
Just want to check with the carrier. If, if that's all I'm seeing, that's all I'm saying. I guess he just added right beside that, no trespassing subject to these terms.
We'll check for that.
But I agree, check with the carrier, but uh, I, I think that's the only way to do it. Otherwise, we're going to be chasing the goose.
Yeah, so if, if we can vote on this, I've, I've got, I'm going to drop for about fifteen minutes. I got another meeting.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to uh leave the park open and add the um gates, the locks, automated locks, which is about a ten thousand dollar expenditure, but it's cheaper than overtime and closing the gates and a lot safer. And so I will call, call the vote. Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Guy?
So he has. He's on the phone.
If you consider for the record, Mr. Guy is temporarily off the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Sheriff Feinberg?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, we have a four to oh, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Chris?
Yes.
Chris, if you have a tickler file, can we revisit this? Uh, this is July, August, September, uh, like September first, just to give us an update on how things are going out there on the fields?
Sure, I'd be glad to. And uh, you know, we all, we'll also bring some other discussion because one thing, when you look at the soccer use on the fields and what the leagues pay, it basically equals the damage they create. And when they're out there on those fields and not monopolizing them on a Saturday, the residents can't use the fields and the dog park people can't park. So maybe something to think about. Do you want to continue to have the leagues out there or at least?
You got a lot of reprieve now.
You know, like the flag of the fall. You know, appropriate groups dominate like that. If you want to pare them down a little bit.
John Luchis wants to speak with you.
Uh, I know if I can see. Okay, well, we'll move to the next agenda item on, on the action agenda. Well, we have management reports on, sorry.
Yeah, let's start with our attorney.
Uh, crazy, uh, another, another agenda we, it's a follow-up to the board's actions to approve using the revised methodology of the revised preliminary assessment role. Uh, and then prepared and some other little nits were just, I'll call it finalized today. And after double checking the statutes and going back and triggered by review. I would ask the board to continue this meeting to a meeting date and time certain next week to adopt two resolutions. One is to adopt the preliminary assessment role uh as it has been compromised as of today. And also another resolution again with regards to having the public hearing, the ability for people to come and make comment and or object to the assessments. And uh Wednesday or Thursday, if the board has some opportunity, and at the end of this meeting, the board, susceptible, the board will continue this meeting just for those two items that would be my request.
So you're saying next Thursday we are here?
Wednesday or Thursday.
And I'm not available on Thursday?
But.
Next Wednesday?
Wednesday, yep.
Wednesday I can do it. I don't know about everyone else's availability.
Just maybe earlier or?
Yeah, the quickest I could do it would be four o'clock.
Could we do it four o'clock on Wednesday? This is Feinberg.
I have no problem with that.
I don't either. But what have I?
How about Doug, Bill?
What are we doing on Wednesday?
They're talking about Tony wants to have another, continue today's meeting till next week to adopt two resolutions. They made some minor changes to the assessment role. So we would be adopting the finalized assessment.
Preliminary assessment.
Preliminary assessment role, excuse me, and then also taking public comment on that.
Well, not taking.
Will we, will we never be finished with that?
Well, it's another resolution that will then, again, address the publication of the paper of the notice. It's two resolutions that we need to keep going forward with the budget and the assessment resolution, assessment methodology. So we're thinking Wednesday at four o'clock if that's acceptable.
This would be a fast meeting.
Yes, there's those two items.
So we're going to see if you were available next Wednesday at four o'clock, Mr. Guy, for a short.
Sounds like amateur hour to me. Wednesday, the, Wednesday, the eighth at four o'clock.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, the eighth, July eighth, I'm sorry, July eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wednesday, the eighth at four o'clock and we can hope that Mr. Banks can make it because everyone else can. Margaret, that's good with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, so did Mr. Banks leave the meeting?
Yes.
He said about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Oh, he left already.
Was that good?
Yeah.
I thought you said fifteen minutes.
Uh, one of the items, the, the closing of the conveyance of Commerce Lake Drive, the deed was to be recorded today. So hopefully as of today, you're the one to be able to second each commerce lake drive. That, which is some of the more nits in the documents. And uh, following up, working with staff on Arborwood and we've got to get together with the developer on that and their attorney and engineer. They've got some questions and some issues. We have issues also. And Charles is their attorney. I'll bring up Charles also the idea of.
Okay, district engineer?
Miss Margaret, can I ask the attorney some questions?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if this is you or somebody else. We have a application that was put in for the apartments and they are using wetlands.
Oh, I think Chris was going to bring that up at the end of the meeting or for the.
I have it in my comments.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that is a good point because they have applied to South Florida Water Management District in South Florida. I personally, they did a, I don't know if this review or he did one heck of a job. Yes, of telling the applicant what they need to do, what they have wrong. And it does look like they are proposing impact wetlands and, and modify easements and do all kinds of like.
Right, I have that list of what they were supposed to do.
Yeah, and they haven't yet, Chris, they've not yet come to you on those set of plans, which you're supposed to do two weeks in advance. So I think Chris can address that possibly in a good report, but I think Chris has reminded them of the law from yesterday.
Okay, and because they also have also contacted, I guess, the engineer, um, what do you call it?
Rick Bullock.
Yeah, we have all their names on this thing. We have names now. We can contact people with all this stuff.
Yeah, and I think also the request for additional information that was submitted by South Florida Water Management talked about, I think around about how they got to interact.
Yes.
So they're, they have a number of questions.
Right, but the, um, they did contact, um, not only the South Water Management, but they did make some requests to.
Army Corps.
The, yes, the Army Corps of Engineers too. So, because we already sent the letters to them and we've never got a response?
No, I think they're deferring jurisdiction at the moment, but uh, we did get in touch with and sent a, a note to be included on the correspondence and also that we hadn't received a set of plans. So where they had asked for asked for comments and letter from us for utility service and that they said that we had, we had no intention to respond until we were provided the plans.
Because they want to put a dog park where the wetlands are. I mean, I, I'm just telling you what it says there. And you know, if we have a hurricane, all this stuff that can take away a pond, we need all that area. Thank you. I still have more questions for them. Okay, the letter to the attorney general? Have we heard anything else?
No, that's all the discount. Sorry, I mean, I've heard, I've heard nothing.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, all right. And then I have another question. I don't know how to address this one. Um, Pelican Reserve is a entity of itself. We went to Fort Myers so that they only go out on tree line. However, then they're not supposed to have any access to Gateway. However, they are coming out of Gateway. I have seen city, city furniture trucks go in. Um, I came out, there were two people in the car. It was a white car. And um, they actually drove on the wrong side of the road when they came out. And there have been residents who have told me they've seen cars come out of there and know the residents. Is there any way we can monitor that, but maybe uh somehow monitor that they don't come out to Gateway? Because I am getting complaints.
Yeah, yes, there are any issues. My understanding was, and I haven't looked at it in a long time, in the revised development order, plan development document for Pelican Reserve, that roadway was supposed to be limited for construction and or emergency access, I believe. It was supposed to be gated at some point in time. If there is an issue with its utilization, that's an appropriate matter to bring up to the city of Fort Myers code enforcement, but I've not found a number to be that reactive, I guess. But that's one way to do it. Uh, again, that's not a district ordinance or, but if the district gets concerned and I don't know how we would, we don't own every boulevard anymore.
Right.
We don't own that property where that road is. I'm not sure what authority the district would have to place such a device on somebody else's property unless we have a reason or something.
We could send a letter to Lennar, the developer, the owner, to let him know that he is jeopardizing the interconnectivity rule and unless he wants to have a assessment model limited to construction vehicles, period.
And I know city furniture is not a construction vehicle.
No, I've seen the same.
Yeah, so the question also though is do you want staff to contact the, the city code enforcement, say we believe that they were using a contrave to the G R I or.
So, or we could have them write a letter to Lennar like Mr. Tinkle said, just to say that they're not limiting just to their construction.
Yeah, we just did a gate to Lennar. Because Lennar is not going to want to touch that with a ten foot pole.
That's the budget philosophy.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, if the board wants to, I'll work with Chris on the letter.
Okay, so I think we made that motion, I'll second it. Now we got to vote, I guess?
Yeah, if there's any comment, many members of the public.
Yes.
And I will say that I've had complaints too from residents that have said that they're, that it is being used for deliveries, not just for construction vehicles, but they are seeing delivery trucks going in that way and uh pool companies and the like. So it's, it is being abused a little bit from what its original intent was.
Yeah, in order to aspect to, I don't know what the position of Lee County would be because of accidents, accidents on their roadway.
Well, our idea is they don't care. They come out. As far as I'm going to do is I'm just going to make a motion that we revise the assessment methodology.
Okay.
So, I think they made the motion that um attorney peers and first stream maker will get together and write a letter to Lennar to express our concerns.
And the possible consequence.
And the possible consequence, okay? So that motion is.
The trucks going in there are the ones that hit the guardhouse going into Pelican that are tall. They had a few trucks hit their overhangs. Yeah, so I would think they're probably coming around the other way. It's a lot faster too, but it's bumpy. It's a tough road.
All the way.
Yep.
So Chris will go and vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To contact the uh city and.
Together with.
Relation to the development order for use of that road. Okay, Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Banks has left the meeting?
Yep.
Okay, and Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, we got a vote five oh for direction to the county attorney for, oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
So Ms. Flaherty, was there anything else or can we move to the district engineer?
We can move to the district engineer. Thank you very much for that time.
And if you can move to the district engineer, if he was online, I do not think Danny is. He might have got caught up on our staff food at the beginning and I did send him the updated information, but he is not online.
All right, management report.
Management report, obviously, Tony talked about the developer and we sent some correspondence to the reviewer for the permit, asked to be included in all that correspondence to receive that information and also let them know that we hadn't received it. According to our permit criteria manually, we had several things in there to review that they needed to respond to their request for additional information. And until we had received those plans and had time to review, we were not going to respond. And uh.
Yeah, I think Chris reminded them that both Chris and I or district myself get notices from South Florida, any applications to Gateway permit. Also get a list of all permanent activity and we'd be there. So I'm not sure why they can, the engineer should know better on this project, quite frankly.
And he did send me those, said it's like you and Tony are spanking me.
Chris said that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I thought you appreciated that. But I wasn't going to bring anything else up unless anyone has some questions on the report and uh unless there's anything you wanted to include or some mention of soccer lights and the.
Missing the lights, the other up.
Yep.
Update on Calloway, uh, Enviro couldn't fix the two structures. Better reach out to another companies coming Monday or next, early next week to put a diaper in the one structure to kind of hopefully plug it up. I will bring it, fix it. Worse than we thought.
I, I had three things, okay? Go ahead. Uh, first one is, and you talked to me, but I want to make sure everybody's understanding, the letter to F dot on the I seventy-five crossing, we're going to be getting that letter out. I don't know if it needs it, but I would make the motion that when you have the letter prepared, you go ahead and send it to Sergio at. It needs it, but I would make the motion that when you have the letter prepared, you go ahead and send it to Sergio at FDOT. Second thing is. I believe the bids that are now in on Commerce Lake's Roundabout. One of you might want to jump in. Is it inappropriate or appropriate for us, that's the county, to have them share us, share with us their cost effective analysis of Roundabout versus signalization in light of the fact that their bids were way off?
I think it's appropriate to ask, and do they have such a document?
Well, they said that their 20-year deal shows that Roundabouts are more cost effective than signalization. My idea is that if you did a cost analysis based on your pre-bid estimates and you put in the extra million dollars plus the extra $800,000 that we got, I don't think it's going to be cost effective anymore. And I think the public needs to hear that.
I think the issue might be for Chris to send my request.
Yeah.
Not necessarily count as a public request, but it is. Or you can just say this is a public request for any and all costs.
For the revised cost analysis based on bids.
I already just say all cost analysis.
All cost analysis.
Including about limited to the bid. And I think that's, I think consensus, I don't need a motion for that. Chris, you go ahead and hold on.
I talked to the engineer weekly. I'll put it forward to him Monday morning.
And then the last one is, I want to talk about the decorative street signs. Are we going to talk about that today? Because I saw something, I think it was in your deal.
I had, I had in my management report that we got a quote for the decorative signs up by the school.
I'm hearing for people that they, that. I looked in the developer, I couldn't find anything, it was, I think it's weak, really weak. I didn't see anything in there that would mandate the continuation of our current and past practices, and that is decorative signs. But I'm getting people telling me that that going to be what I call the Lehigh look, ain't getting it. It looks horrible. And when you figure out, I used the price and I thought the number was $30,000, something like that. I don't know why I had that number in my mind, but $30,000 for 7,000 EAUs, four bucks. And if I debt finance it, we're talking pennies. Why do we want to degrade the community to have that Lehigh look for pennies? This is ridiculous. Let's go with the decorative flooded signs on all of our roads and stick with what we've got. If they cost $40,000 or $50,000, so be it. That was a decision made a long time ago and a look made to this community. Let's don't cheapen it by putting in the Lehigh look. We're gonna put in the Lehigh look, let's figure out what else we can grab over there and put into. It's ridiculous, this is Gateway, not Lehigh.
Well, I got the quote, and that didn't include the flashing beacons, but to put in the decorative signs, and it was $24,124. And according to the construction bid from Suffolk, their, their bid for all the signs in was $2,500. And Johnson Engineering was checking into that because he even thought it was artificially low to put the signage in. But what they would do would be to give us a credit if we put our signs in. At this point in, it's going to be real close, we might not be able to get the signs in. We'd have to come in after the fact and install them, but.
They did for that deal, $2,500 for the signs, it's in balance, bit. No, no way, no. Can't even buy the material for that.
But that would be the number that they would give us credit for, because that was the number of the bid. And that's why I got the quote.
My, my recommendation is that we put in decorative signs if it has to be, as a follow-up, so be it. And if it's, it's a look, I mean, it comes right into the community and you see that trashy look, that makes sense.
They're gonna get hit left and right too when that school first opens up, will be replaced.
Those Roundabouts are safe, they're plenty safe, no problem with those Roundabouts.
Mr. Tinkle, you want me to bring that back as a formal agenda item for vote for the next meeting?
Please.
I'll take care of that.
Mrs. Steinberg, may I ask the manager a question, please?
You can, and then I have a question.
Okay, I have two. Is the commissioner coming to our next meeting?
I haven't got a confirmation, I sent a note over there today asking if they were planning on the 16th. Because I told them we wanted to get it addressed because of the timeframe with the engineering drawings.
Okay, and I want to thank you for the contract summary. And I was looking at mainscape, okay? And are we going to look into the requirements for bid for landscaping? Because we only have eight months left.
Yeah, we typically always put that up, but when we did it last time, we saved $110,000. They came in as a little bid, and the other thing, we talked about tightening things up. You can put that in that contract notice, those little grass clippings are blown into the stormwater system. And then you put in a fine on the backside of that too, if they are caught doing it. I will call a fine, excuse me, contract.
A penalty.
Yeah, penalty or contract deduction.
Yeah, one thing on that point, certain communities are getting more aggressive about vegetative materials going into the stormwater system. So I don't know how aggressive Lee County is also on code enforcement, but some are very aggressive.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Steinberg, those are my two questions.
Chris, my only question was on, and forgive me if this was addressed and I just missed it. Number three, potential for development adjacent to hidden links. What caught my attention was a request, they inquired about the vacation of the drainage judgment that serves as a stormwater conveyance from Stony Brook.
Well, that's a, that's all in preliminary, and they've just been making overtures, they haven't submitted any plans. They were discussing possible vacation easement, Tony's aware of it. Early on, when they looked at developing that parcels, they looked at potentially hard piping, you know, putting a pipe structure and covering it up so they could develop over it. So we haven't done anything formal, we're just talking to them and monitoring requests.
Okay.
You unified your flow rate, Margaret.
I'm thinking to myself, you can't, we're gonna drain. Make sure we drain.
We're gonna what? Drown?
Drown. The pipe's gonna be sized right.
Those likely a box collar.
That's probably.
And I will make one more statement, I had on there, update on the budget discussion. And we're gonna bring the formal proposals to you at the next meeting too. But when the budget came in, it was approved at the high watermark. The staff had increased the budget by $5 a month per EAU, or about $216,000. And when the board adopted the assessment methodology, that increased it another approximate $216,000. So we had about $432,000 increase in the budget overall. From staff, I mean, from direction from the board, we're looking at a number of reductions to bring to that June 16th meeting. Among those, funding one staff position from utility reserves and deleting one staff position for a net decrease of $100,000. Funding utility staff incentives from utility reserves for $6,000. Transfer utility reserves, so approximately $150,000 to $200,000 to the general fund through a use agreement. For the enterprise fund to use the district's right of ways for operation and maintenance. This funding would also have cuts made in the general fund in the stormwater and road repair budget. Allow that work to be done. So it's basically a transfer.
What is this in dollars and cents equate to, you know, change to the bill payer's pocketbook?
Well, we, we looked at on our side on that, you know, $5 a month or $60 a year. And on the assessment methodology, the cost was the same, about $5 a month. So total $120 per year on that single family. Of course, it wouldn't be as, have that impact on the multi-family. But we also, you'll see later, I have an agenda item in there to transfer about $300,000 from the utility reserve account into the operational account, which is similar to what we did last year in March of 2019. And one of the things is there were several items in there, we had some red ink. That if we cover those costs with those fees, that'll allow additional carryforward money. We're looking at deletion of some portions of capital projects. And, and then looking at a contribution to carryforward funds so that we would have a net zero increase in the assessment.
I can tell you right now, I'm gonna vote against that.
Well, we're just bringing it forward because the board had those concerns, so I'll have those projects listed outline, item by line, item. But that's all I have from my end. And we'd be ready to move to the action agenda. Margaret, you ready for that?
Infomark contract, yeah.
Okay, and that first one's Kenny. All utilities manager.
No, the first one is the contract extension with Infomark.
Sorry, I got it wrong.
Mr. Guy still on?
No, I do not see Mr. Guy. And Banks is off. So we are down to three.
We're gonna have to get real friendly, if we really do that fast.
Well.
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the contract renewal with Infomark.
Okay, we've got a motion, we get a second. And again, that contract, they brought it back for a year renewal, Mr. Tinkle had some concerns about potential legal action and problems. I did mention to him that that contract does have a 30-day notification. So that's why I was just going ahead and moving forward with the contract. And, well, Sarah exposure's great on our side than theirs, and the folks do a good job for us. I mean, Steve Bloom, Sonja, Marilyn, that whole team, they do, they do great work. And we're right in the middle of budget announcements and tax rolls and things like that, so.
I'll second it on the grounds that now is not the time. We can't even change this.
And our consultant metersist also said that the majority of our problem lies with the prime contractor, not the subcontractor. Tony, would you echo that?
Yes. So, I know which way excrement goes, first down.
With that, we have a motion and a second, and I will call the votes, Supervisor Flaherty.
Can I ask one question?
Sure, I'm sorry.
All right, um, I know this expires the next April, are we going to also put this out for bid?
We certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
And you're requesting for now, okay.
Make correction, I hope, we're not gonna put it out for bid, we're gonna put it out for.
Request for proposal.
Request for.
Invitations to bid request. Proposals for qualification.
Okay, thank you.
And that would happen in January, so that you. Okay, so we have, Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes. Supervisor Feinberg, chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Grudgingly, yes, motion carries through. Moving forward, sorry for my editorial comment.
Yes.
Utilities staff.
If I leave, we don't have a floor, right?
You do have a floor, yeah, yeah, if you wanted to leave, you could.
Okay, Kenny, capital expenditure?
Kenny Hall, utility manager. This is a request to approve an expenditure of $86,153 for electrical equipment associated for the irrigation upgrade that we approved earlier in the year. This, the, what this basically is, is all the electrical components for that project. On your, on the agenda, it has all of the, from gray bar, all of, everything is broken down price-wise. If you have any questions, Bill Shaw, our district electrician, is here to answer any of them. Just wanted to say that this will be a substantial savings because we are going to do the electrical components and all the electrical installation in-house. This will be done by our district electrician and field staff.
Comfortable with that?
Is it in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Motion is approved.
Second.
I think we have a motion and a second to approve, call the votes, Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Derek Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries through. And I want to say that the initial bids to have this project done by the contractors came up higher than expected. We went with direct purchase of the equipment, and congratulations. Congratulations to Kenny and Billy and the whole side that worked on it, because we're getting the job done, you know, professionally, saving a lot of money doing it. And we'll increase 2,000 gallon per minute on the capacity of the irrigation system. Have a good night. Okay, and this is next item is mine. In last March, we did a transfer of a quarter nine dollars of the utility reserves to utility operations. And part of that was the engineering for that project that Kenny just talked about funding that's under construction. And that was with WSB, and it was just a transfer to operations from that utility reserve. At that time, the utility reserve was $4.4 million. At this point, due to the R and R contribution from the rate cases and capital, it was included in that rate set reserve sitting at about $5 million. And we're proposing to transfer $300,000 from those reserves into utility operations. One was we budgeted $50,000 for that true up of Lee County, that bill came in at $80,000. So we were short in the budget, $30,000. We also, the rate study, it's underway by Rapetelis. Looked at funding that from reserves, right now we have $53,000, I'm sorry, $40,000 in the utility engineering. We're gonna pull it out of that, but we plan on using the utility reserve money as appropriate. And it would also allow more money for carryforward in the budget. And the same thing for the metersist folks, that was not a budgeted expense to hire them, but needed expense. And I think it's well worth it. Maybe a little additional work, it might go up, but right now, $26,500 for that contract, but we wanted to earmark $30,000. And that would come out and go into operations. Another thing like this, Mr. Tinkle purchased a valve exercise machine for $27,500. I think the money's cost us not to have one exercise those valves in the systems apparent. Salivating benefits, we look to be using that money to take that burden off the budget this year for a full-time GIS employee. That's our intern, Austin, he graduated, got his master's degree in environmental engineering. It's been a huge asset in the GIS mapping system. We're also looking at upgrading that system and doing a infrastructure and information management system for our operations and permitting. So that again, would work toward reducing that budget. And we also had a number of items up to $23,000 that we went in the red on our budget. And some of it had to do with heavy truck repairs, when we took our crane truck in, it needed all new brakes. A number of things, including air conditioning, the rotors. We had some additional overages in gasoline signage, building IT support for the utility system. CUIS and some additional money, we went over budget on repair lift stations and some manhole work. They just turned out worse than we thought, so. Once again, we pull that money out of operations, put it in the budget. And if it's not spent, it would be eligible for carryforward. Kenny also put $6,000 in the budget for incentives, when utility staff get certifications or licenses. So we'll take that burden off the budget and take that reserve and still be able to provide those incentives. And also, we looked at $16,000 for the consolidating the water use permit for the district golf course. That was approved last year, we just did not move forward with it, but as we're starting to improve those wells. And rehab, looking at the pump testing in the pipelines. It looks like it's a very worthwhile investment, and that goes into the next, which is expand those irrigation water supply wells. And that's to go in and rehab two more of those wells and also the pipeline. And that may give us the supply we need, or we could delay or forego that lower Hawthorne well. Even though we are moving forward to get that funded, we could still use that water to blend to reduce the chlorides in that well. And we don't keep those permits active and rehab those wells, they're gonna take that permit from us. And you cannot get a shop well permit these days. And that water quality is very high, and the pump test on the well right out there was at 100 gallons a minute. And so it's worthwhile. And the last one was us hiring a construction inspector because we're gonna have another cable. cable project going into Gateway Greens, as we learned from Stony Brook, that can be fraught with danger. We wanna have somebody out there almost on a full-time basis to oversee the contractor, and we're in a legal duty to protect our equipment, and also with our limited staff, we just don't have the time to pull somebody off our own staff full-time to do that, so we're, we're gonna pull those out, and we would hope that having that person out, we're still gonna have some issues, but it would minimize that damage. So those are the 10 projects that we were asking for, and again, our reserve was 4.4 last year, it's up to 5.0 right now, so it'll take it back in another eight or nine months, so those funds will be replenished.
Or make the motion to approve, where's the other $18?
$18?
$2,999, $2,999, 982.
$382, that's what it added up to, I should have rounded it up, but.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure, we'll start with Margaret.
On number eight, the, the surface water permit that would be removed from the district and transferred to the club at Gateway, is that just for the irrigation of their, of the golf course?
Strictly for the irrigation, and they use surface water only, but because it's tied into our permit, we do the reporting and I think quarterly sampling on that, so we're kind of involved.
So this would, this would cut that out, and then we would exclusive use the wells?
Yeah, we would still have to sample the wells to do that, but it would really divest us from that surface water system that the golf course operates, and those wells, we, that is our permit, so all we're doing is we're consolidating it with our master permit for irrigation, so we can use those wells for backup or additional water supply, because if one or two of our wells went out, we would really be stretching it to make that supply work.
But those wells would not be being used by the golf course?
No, what we're gonna do is we plant the valve and send the water this way into the storage tanks, and we've had discussions with the county about that, they don't have a problem, and the golf course, you probably have to rehab that whole pipeline.
People didn't know we could get the water.
Yeah, we don't even know if we can get it, so it's strictly for us, it's the wells across the street, and the ones right here in our compound.
Just, just wanted clarification, okay.
Flaherty, questions?
For the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it legal to do this, because it is before the budget is passed? We put something into the budget before it is passed.
This is the current budget, if I understand it correct, the three.
No, it says, it says 2020, 2021.
Now, what I was saying on that is, is with some of the reductions or money we wouldn't spend, some of that money would be available for carryforward for the board's use in 2021.
So, but that's when I'm confused here, is that you have it down for the year 2021, and that amount is for 2021? Are all these for 2021 or these for now?
Well, some of those, some of those projects, like the water use permitting, will get underway right now.
But some of them are not until 2021, like the full-time person.
Well, they'll, they'll start October 1st with the new budget.
So that's what I wanna know, if it's legal subject for this money before.
Well, you can, once again, you can transfer from reserves to operations for any particular purpose, you wish it was that explicit, just roll it all.
And some of that, some of that money we did in March of last year, we carried through to this year for that project.
Okay, now I need to talk to Stephen Bloom.
Mr. Bloom, are you available?
I'm just.
I see he's there.
He doesn't wanna talk to me.
Looks like he's coming on.
We're just calling Mr. V for short.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cause such confusion.
You there, V?
Hello?
Hold on just a second.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Bloom.
Yes, sorry about that, it would not go on mute.
All right, according to Chris, we have $5.5 million in the utility reserve account, is this correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if we reduce it by $300,000, how long will it take to get that $300,000 back in?
How, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of it, how long will it take to?
Get the $300,000 back into that reserve account, approximately?
Oh, um, that I'm not quite sure, I mean, that obviously depends upon revenue, are you looking for in terms of months or years, I mean, it's?
What do we have dedicated, Steve, put it the other way, what do we have dedicated in the utility deal for capital reserve funds? I was thinking we had somewhere between 175, 200,000, something like that, a year?
Yeah, I'd have to, I mean, right now, let's see here, yeah, right now, spending, it's about 414,000 dollars, it's kind of what we were expecting to have at the end of this year, but this is, I think we're talking about two different things, that's why I'm hesitating, that the, what the reserve that Chris is talking about is different than what's already been moved over for capital projects. So to answer the initial question, I mean, I can't say in terms of how long it'll take to punish that out, that obviously depends upon utility billing.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Bloom.
Welcome.
So I'll make a motion to approve this transfer.
Okay, we have a motion, may I get a second?
Say it.
Secondly, a motion and a second, call the vote, Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, and I think that would bring us to.
Consent.
Oh, yeah, we got it, sorry.
My motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, to approve, approve the consent agenda, the call the vote, Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward three to oh, approve the consent agenda.
They were down to supervisor comments?
Supervisor comments, and Tony, did you wanna bring up continuing that meeting, or is that after Supervisor?
It's after, so it won't be adjourned, it will be continued.
Supervisor Flaherty?
I just, I'm gonna make my list.
Oh, no.
I'm asking these, well, I'm gonna make a list, okay, I have only one thing left, okay, on my list for today. Lauren Griffin Drive, we are going to be having a new high school, okay, we are having a new round of, okay, however, on one side of the road, when you go down Griffin Drive, looks really, really nice, on the other side of the road, doesn't look so nice, okay? And I do have a estimate of how to fix that, it's in front of the dollar rights, which is right near the high school, so you really do want that area to look nice, and I don't think it all has to be done in one year, but we could put the irrigation in and make sure, because when Al and I are going down there, the irrigation is broken, the plants have to keep being replaced, so if we update, you know, fix that so it looks nice like the other side, I would like that.
Which side, you talked about that?
The non-Hampton Park side.
The non-Hampton Park. So closer to the 82 intersection.
Right, and they know the lakes right in front of there, just after the high school, so that area will look.
Coming this way or going the other way?
I'm going towards 82, it's on my right hand.
After you go back to the school?
No, before you come.
Before you get there, so it's just the area right of the bike, right?
Right.
I mean, transition into the world of Bahia.
Yeah, so you wanna, you wanna look nice before you get to the high school, so I do have, it was given to me, and I was thinking that maybe you could look at it, and maybe it could come back up.
Bring it back, it'll be a considerable budget expenditure, part of the problem there is it's old road base, so the top soil, it's like.
You're bringing top soil.
Yeah, you have to pull out what's in there, that road base, bring in the top soil, add the irrigation, because there is no irrigation, and solid.
The thing to watch there is you've got a site limitation on landscaping, pull it out of yours, coming from the right, Flavia, and then the school coming out, I don't know how far, it'll, probably won't bother them on site distance as much, but it'll bother Magnolia for sure, so we wanna make sure something low, low, low line.
And I'm thinking more of like, not doing the whole thing, and maybe just doing the irrigation this year, and then maybe the side next to, if it's in the budget, you know, we have to, can't do everything at one time, I think we could spread that.
Yeah, a job like this, we would put out to bid, probably because the amount that we go, and that could drop the cost, but we'd be glad to put it together, and then you can make a motion to increase the budget.
Can't increase the budget.
Then allocate carryforward funds or something else.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair, comments?
I, yeah, I have one, and that was, and is Brian still there by any chance?
He sure is, right here.
Brian, I had the opportunity to take a visit to the Stony Brook weir this last weekend, and grass is growing in the areas on both sides of the weir. There's a lot of vegetation, and it's closer than three feet, so I'd like for somebody to take a look at that, but what was more concerning to me is that the rock has fallen away from the sides of the weir on both sides of it, and something needs to be done to build that back up, because all that, the fabric on both sides of that is exposed to the sun, and that's gonna deteriorate very quickly. So can you have somebody go out there and take a look at that weir, please?
Yes, we'll go out next week and look at it, when you bring rock in.
That was all I had.
Okay, we have, we have, right here in our yard, since we've been doing some maintenance on the lake banks to replace some bear spots. Mr. Tinkle?
Only thing I've got is over on those ponds, Cypress Links, where we had the bad neck erosion, has anything we're talking about with that, those property owners, those two or three K, big cave outs, washouts.
I think Brian went over and inspected them, and he thought they were such large cave outs, but we could do some limited repairs.
Yeah, it was limited repairs, it's not a bit, but to the owners, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big washout.
You know, the small, those areas that you went over there and looked down the back.
The one at the top, yes, we're gonna place behind the back of that, I wanna take that there, go fix that and wash it out.
Yeah, I'm talking about when you come up to Cypress Links at the monument, if you go left, that little cul-de-sac, it's the second house on the right, well, the first two houses at both property lines, it just looks like it's totally washed out. It is a point repair deal, but would not take much, but if that water level gets that much more, it's only gonna get worse. That's all I had.
We could take a look at it, okay?
Okay, Tony, at this point, you wanted me to continue this meeting until 4:00 PM on July 8th?
Yes, that's the purpose is considering two resolutions associated with the addition of substance and adoption of budget.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to continue the meeting till next Wednesday at 4:00 PM.
At this location.
In the boardroom and also remotely.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to nothing, and this meeting will be continued until July 8th at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice Fourth of July, everybody.
Thank you, Fourth of July, stay safe.